Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's special meeting of the Freeport City Council. It is Monday, August 2025, 2025, 6:00 PM. I declare a quorum is present and will officially call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Councilman Rosso to lead us both in the pledge and the prayer.
Let's pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for gathering us here once again. We thank you, Lord, that you watch over us every day. And we depend on you, Lord, to lead us and guide us. We pray that you would bless this council and everyone under the sound of my voice. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, and you may be seated. So the next thing on the agenda is citizens' comments. I have two that have signed up to speak. First is Mr. Manning Rollerson.
Good afternoon, council.
Good evening.
I come to the council today as there's certain things that I want to find out what the council can do about it. We had met at Freeport Haven in Beto Buzoria. Went out and had Sharon Wilson with Oilfield Witness to come down and shoot the videos and do an assessment on Freeport LNG. Well, Melody Oldham and myself, we have got the reports back on that assessment, and it's not good. This is a repeated thing that's happening with Freeport LNG leaking in this community and dumping in this community. It has an adverse effect to the population. And when it comes to it, the problem is, is that people will die. People will get sick. And when we sign contracts with these companies, they are supposed to follow that contract when it comes to the health and safety of the people or the community. Well, this is an issue, and we're going to send a copy. I will send you a copy to the city of that report, just like I sent it to County Judge Matt Sebastian and every agency that governs Freeport. Because it's at the point to where these industries can dump and pump, and there's no kind of recourse to it. But the people are suffering. You can see it in the children. You can see it in the statistics of toxic poison and toxic deaths within the city of Freeport. We have to address this issue. This issue has to be addressed. The other issue is, when it comes to housing, we have a housing issue in Freeport. I don't know what plans you guys have for the housing issue, but we at Freeport Haven is trying to work with the federal government to see about getting grants to start building homes in Freeport because there's an issue with rooftops in the city of Freeport, and that is a tax base. And we need those homes, or we have young people growing new families, so we need those homes in the city of Freeport. So that's some of the things that we need to really address. And I also want to know what we're going to do with the downtown city of Freeport building. Because if the city is going to move out that building, then the city put the building up so everybody can bid on that building. Because my organization would be one of them to try to build on that building based on, we need economical growth downtown. And however we have to get it, we just have to get it, you know? So that's a couple of the plans that we have at Freeport Haven. Also, I sent every last one of you guys an invitation to come on September 13th as the leaders of the city to be able to speak to the young people for the back-to-school batch that's being done by Freeport Haven and Beto Buzoria. Every last one of my representatives of this city is welcome, and you have a place to speak that way the new generation will know where we're going at and who's leading them. So that's some of the main things that I wanted to address. And I heard that the last council meeting was awesome, and that's what I like. If you're in here all night long at that meeting, you're doing something, you know? Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Rollerson. Next, we have Mr. Kevin Harris.
Good evening, mayor, council, and this fellow citizens of Freeport. First, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of the Freeport Police Officers Association. And we want to address some of the concerns that we have with the impacts of budgeting on our department. We understand that budgeting is a complex issue that requires many difficult choices. But we believe that reducing support for a police department is not one that we want to take, especially during a time when recruitment and retention are already challenging. We can't fill half the spots that we got. We're seeing officers leave. I'd like to say that they're leaving for much bigger, better opportunities, but the reality is they're not. They're leaving for other small agencies that, in some cases, have fewer calls for service, a smaller population, but they're much more competitive in their compensation. It seems that Freeport, by contrast, is asking its officers to do more with less, with no adjustment to match the rising cost of living. The impact of this is real. It makes retaining experienced officers much harder and nearly impossible. It makes recruiting new ones extremely difficult. And ultimately, it puts more pressure on the employees that we already have, which times into poor response times in service for the citizens. We're not here to criticize. We're here simply to collaborate, to offer a clear picture of what this means for our department. Public safety is not something that should be treated as an area that can be neglected. Our officers care deeply about this community. They are committed to serving and protecting Freeport with the utmost professionalism and integrity. But to continue doing that effectively and to continue offering effective services, we have to have the support, both in resources and recognition. We respectfully ask the council to consider the proposed increases to the overtime budget and explore competitive cost-of-living adjustments to bring our salaries in line with neighboring agencies to hopefully keep both current employees and be able to entice potential employees. We share many of the same goals of the city council, but we also recognize the need to keep Freeport Police Department a competitive and supportive place of employment so that we can safely and adequately serve the citizens. We too want the best Freeport ever. I want to thank you for your time, your consideration, and your ongoing commitment with us to this community and your employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have presentations and updates. Two, a presentation on proposals for potential water and sewer rate increase. Ms. Hurst.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Tonight, I bring to you another presentation with more creative water sewer rate increases that will generate the needed revenue to cover the deficit for fiscal year 2526 while keeping compassion and the protection of residents and small businesses in mind. My hope tonight is that a decision can be made to nail this information down. As a brief refresher for the reasons why tonight's discussion is so important, the Water and Sewer Fund should operate like a business with water and sewer charges covering all operating and debt obligations of the fund. The fund works on a working capital basis, better broken down to mean that it operates on a cash basis. The cash generated in the fund should be sufficient to cover the expenditures of the fund. A deficit shows that more cash is going out than cash is coming in, and is obviously a problem. Generally, the general fund should not transfer to cover any deficits. Governments are required to follow GASP, which establishes accounting principles to be followed, known as GAAP. GASP 34 states user charges of an enterprise fund be set at a level sufficient to cover the cost of providing the service. Texas Constitution, Article 3, Section 52A generally prohibits cities from giving away water service below cost or for free. Reasoning being, general fund money serves a purpose that benefits all residents, and the money in an enterprise fund benefits only a single user. The city's financial policy provides guidelines for staff to follow and reads that we should develop and maintain a balanced budget. User fees should be established to recover the cost of service, and more specifically, that enterprise fund's user fees should be set at levels enough to cover operating expenditures, meet debt obligations, and provide additional funding for capital improvements. What does this mean for the city regarding the budget? The billing rates for water and sewer have not been changed since September 1st, 2023. Since that change, BWA cost increased last year by 14.14%, a total cost of $378,000. BWA cost increased 7.8% this year, a total additional cost of $262,000. Beolia cost increased last year by 18.09% overall, a total additional cost of $474,000. And Beolia cost will increase this year by an estimated 3% overall, a total additional cost of $100,000. In total, BWA has gone up 21.97%, totaling $641,000. And Beolia has gone up 21.09%, totaling $574,000. The average increase in water sewer service cost to provide the service for just the past two years is $608,000 a year. The grand total combined increase in costs since the last rate adjustment totals $1.2 million. Staff is recommending the rate increase to generate the needed revenue to offset the increased cost of service. As a short recap, we did compare the water bills with local cities in the initial stages of our analysis. The water bill was based on a residential consumer using 5,000 gallons a month. Freeport remains one of the lowest for the local communities. We heard from the public initially that local comparisons were not as beneficial, so we went to the state level for averages with cities of our population size. The information is available for the public to see on the TMO website. Overall, Freeport's water bill for 5,000 gallons would be $37.61 versus the state average of $41.58. It indicates Freeport being 9.55% below the state average. The sewer bill was compared to local cities also, and Freeport remains one of the lowest in the community for that aspect as well. We compared the sewer rates to the state average for cities with our population size. Again, the information's available on the TMO website. A sewer bill for 5,000 gallons in Freeport would be $28.55 versus the state average of $35.05 for cities of our size. That indicates Freeport being 18.55% below state average. And then thankfully, last time we met, you all narrowed the options down between E and F, so I did NICS A through D. I did not change E and F, but as a recap, option E on the left proposes that there would be a 15% increase for water and sewer for all users except for residential. Residential would see a 5% water increase and 10% sewer increase. The total impact to a residential user would be $4.74, and the total impact to a non-residential user would be $16.70. It would potentially, sorry, it would provide the city additional revenue of $1.4 million. Option F proposes a 20% increase for water and sewer for all users except for residential. Residential would see a 5% water increase and 10% sewer increase. The impact to a residential user would again be $4.74, and the impact to a non-residential user would be $22.27. However, it would produce city additional revenue of $1.6 million. And tonight, our two more hybrid proposals for consideration, options G and H. Last time, we heard that small businesses need protection in this increase. From my own personal experience in the city, I interpreted that to be intended specifically for the smaller restaurants that are already struggling. They are generally the ones that are talked about the most. Because it's also the most common type of small business in Freeport, I went digging to find a solution for that type of business. I did have to analyze things quite a bit to determine the numbers and see what the additional revenue impact would be, if it would be sustainable, and how we would define this in the code. I did determine that this would be doable, and these two options reflect that. So option G on the left proposes the same 15% increase for water and sewer for all users, except for residential and small business restaurants. Residential and small business restaurants would see a 5% water increase and 10% sewer increase for residential and small business restaurants. This is so many words, sorry, y'all. And the impact to a residential and small business restaurant user would be $4.74, and the impact to all others would be $16.70. It would provide the city additional revenue of $1.4 million. And then option F proposes a 20% increase for water and sewer for all users except for residential and small business restaurants. Those users would see the 5% increase in water and 10% increase in sewer. The impact to the residential and small business restaurant user would be $4.74, and the impact to all other users would be $22.27. It would provide the city additional revenue of $1.6 million. And this is the overall summary of the two proposals still standing from the last meeting and the two new hybrid proposals. Freeport is below the local water prices by 14.85% and below the state average by 9.55%. And we are below the local sewer prices by 17.13% and below the state average by 18.55%. I do believe that all four of these options would help the city greatly. Mr. Pennington and I spoke heavily throughout this. The only concern would be seeing an average increase of $600,000 a year. None of these are going to produce that. So option F and option H would be the safer options in regards if we see the increase again. We don't have to go back and raise rates again back-to-back that high, if that makes any sense. And then that leaves it open for discussion and questions.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you for the time that you put into this presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurst?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hurst, thank you for the updated information from the last meeting. I actually thought we were going to talk about this at the regular session meeting, not tonight. I thought tonight was just going to be budget, but that's fine. First question out of the gate is, what's the threshold that you use to determine who was the low-end user of sewer and water for the residential and for the commercial?
So, sorry.
I think you had that on slide number nine. That's what I was referencing.
On slide number nine?
Yeah, just here, the rate information, the top, black text.
And what was your question again?
What was the threshold that you used to delineate who the high users were and the low users were? What logic were you using?
Based on actuals is what revenue projections were based on, and then I'm trying to get the...
I'm just wondering, did you use like a threshold of number of gallons consumed?
Following your question, right? The gallons consumed are already set as far as what she indicated were businesses that were permitted, what, fast food? Is that right, Ashley?
So, sorry, I was trying to pull up the ordinance that we have on the item later. So we actually drafted an ordinance to define each of the codes. So the residential consumer has a three-quarter inch meter. And then to better define the small business restaurant customer, it would be a food service establishment whose primary purpose is preparation and sale of food or beverages. It's limited to restaurants with less than 5,000 square feet of gross floor area or fewer than 50 seats, whichever's greater. And it does not include large-scale or chain restaurants, banquet halls, or commercial catering facilities exceeding the thresholds.
Okay. That's helpful. And with those numbers there, that's how you derive G and H?
Yes, sir.
Explain to me again, the piping, however, again, or the pipe size?
Three-quarter inch meter.
For...
Is...
Is that going to be implemented newly, or is that...
No, that's how it already is.
Okay. So what's the standard pipe size for all the residential?
Three-quarter inch.
Three-quarters?
Yes.
No one's at one inch?
There's a few. So the rate code as it is now is three-quarter to one inch is what that covers. I would say probably 98% of residential are three-quarter inch.
What percentage?
Probably 98%.
Okay. And then the other 2%, where's that at? Higher, bigger, I imagine, a larger pipe? What is that size?
Two inches, probably, the biggest residential.
And then on the commercial side, is that including commercial industrial? Or are we delineating that, or is it just all under commercial?
So these, G and H takes it, so small business restaurant would be treated the same as residential, and then everyone else. So commercial, industrial, and everyone else would be all other. Yes.
Okay. Interesting. And I'm just curious, what's the largest pipe size that we have here in the city? City limits?
For commercial industrial, I believe 10-inch.
10-inch?
I think.
Is that, are there several accounts that are at the 10-inch level, or do we have those on the...
I would have to look. I don't have the information in front of me.
No further questions, mayor, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Hurst? Yes, sir.
All right, first of all, I actually want to thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing on this budget. You've definitely been going above and beyond, so we really appreciate, you know? Okay, can you back up to the page where you have the four different, A, what is it? G, F?
I can try. Oh, there it goes.
Yes, that one right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now you said you were recommending F and H?
We believe that those would be the preferable options.
One thing to note on that, I haven't done in the past, is that it's one thing to think about the revenue that we're short, the 1.1, almost 1.2. It's another thing to remember that, you know, like we've talked about what might be needed next year based on the average increases that we've been seeing this year, the $600,000. In addition to that, that does not take into any capital that you put into the system. So there's no pumps, no lines, no nothing. So the revenue that we're looking at is just trying to get caught up. We're still short on capital. So I just want to make sure I point that out.
Yes, sir. So, okay. F and G, I mean, so G, so now we're getting to G. That's a small business. And H is to... Okay. So G is not one of the recommendations. It was F and H, right?
Correct. I mean, any of them are recommended, but yes, sir, F and H.
Okay. I was just making sure, because I wanted to make sure, you know, we talked about last time, you know, trying to work with the small business owners who's maybe struggling or, you know, just trying to get by, and we want businesses to come. We want residents to be able to, you know, try to start a business and run a business. So I see H is, it's one of the ones with the small businesses. But I still think that, I was liking G, you know, but...
So G is option E, but with the exception of the small business restaurants. And then H is option F, but includes the small business restaurants as an exception also.
Yes, okay.
And I guess one thing to add in here from the legal perspective, because the legislature is in special session right now. And it appears that they're about to pass the bill that says, moving forward, starting January of 2026, no cities can increase their property tax more than 1%. So a few years ago, it was 8% was the cap, and then they lowered it to 3.5%. So it looks like, you know, cities are going to be in a difficult position in the future that by law, you can't raise your revenue more than 1%. And inflation increases more than 1%, right, for gas and all the things that cities spend money on. And so now, the water rates are not related to the property tax, except in the past, we've used the property taxes, right, the general fund to help support the water, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, and that's not, you know, Ashley said that that's not advisable. I would just point out that it will just definitely not even be an option, you know, if we end up with the 1% cap for the budget next year. So any capital expense that you're going to spend on, in water is going to have to be 100% come from whatever you collect on your water rates.
I thank you. No further questions.
Counsel, any more? Any more questions?
I got some follow-up on that, mayor. Is there anybody else? Yeah.
Dan and Ashley, when you all made, look, when you looked into the small business restaurants, I heard your guidelines of what would be classified as a small business or a small restaurant. Have you all taken into account the businesses that will say, hey, well, while I'm not a small business restaurant, I'm still a small business. Why don't I qualify for that smaller water or sewer increase? Have you all accounted for that?
So, to be completely honest, I've had like 500 discussions with Mr. Pennington, because I had a thought, and then I'd go home and try to lay down and go to sleep, and then I'm thinking, oh, this is going to create another problem. Several times, I think, we threw back the idea, hey, if we start excluding one, everyone's going to want an exception. How do we do this? Which I think the biggest thing was us trying to figure out how to define all these different classes within the code. And then, like I said, a small business restaurant was specifically chosen just based on what I see online, the people that come speak up here. I know that trying to get food back downtown has been mentioned. So that's where it derived from. Is it the best option? I think that would be up for council. I know that it's, I know that the potential is there that it could create a bigger issue when we start excluding these businesses.
Just to echo what you said, the real challenge is trying to tease it out, you know, exactly what that small business is, and then trying to enforce that, ensuring that you're not gamed at it, and it gets challenging.
Another reason that I chose the restaurant is they're a higher water user than the average commercial, you know, you go in and shop for clothes kind of place. So I think that's also what helps support that and why I dug so deep into that.
And the permitting is also there for the restaurant, for the food establishment, where there's food permits. So it's a clear delineation between, you know, small businesses, because they're just small businesses that runs the gamut, you know?
Yeah. When I received our package... Yeah, um, wh- when I received our packet, um, I did utilize, last council meeting, hey, small restaurants, um, but I was really also including small businesses. And so I actually, I, just from reading this, I would have heartburn excluding one small business versus another. I'd much rather, and not to make y'alls, uh, day-to-day work more difficult, I would much rather keep it more streamlined. If, if we're gonna raise a rate, and it's a business, well then, let's make it even across the board, um, instead of picking and choosing, because then, like I said, it becomes more difficult for y'all, but then y'all get these businesses will say, well, Freeport's picking one type of business over another, and that's not truly the case, so, um...
I think there's pros and cons to, to each side of it, we, on one hand, we show we really value these, on the other hand, we show we really don't care if you're a franchiser, you're in here for the industry, um, we're gonna make our money off you, but we're, we're only gonna, yeah, I thi- I think you could argue it both ways, a hundred percent.
The system's already in place for E and F, you know, if we go to G and H, we're creating something new, and there's always unintended con- consequences with that, so...
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rosso, you have anything? Councilman Pena?
Um, just wanna kinda give some clarifications here, back on slide number four, can we go back to slide number four?
Whoops, I'm going the wrong way.
You know, when I look at comparable averages here, I, I wanna exclude Angleton, Lake Jackson, and Richwood. And really just kinda keep Klute, Oyster Creek. Simply because that's more in line, and it really does kind of reflect where Freeport is. And we're actually on the higher side. And I say those, I, I reference those cities simply because they're similar in size, the only exception is Richwood, but I can imagine that Richwood has, um, a higher rate just because they have a lot more development, I'm, I'm not sure all the specifics as to the reasons why they're at a fifty-five or fifty-six dollars, uh, base. So I just wanted to point that out, um, that the comparison here, average billing price, is, uh, in my opinion, slanted because we have, um, comparable cities that do not truly compare, other than their proximity to the city of Freeport. Uh, the second idea I wanted, I wanted to look at was slide number five. And so here, we had the residential water of ten thousand, a population group of ten thousand and fifteen thousand, he said the average fee for a five thousand gallon is forty-one dollars. And, uh, that's on the residential, what's the average for the commercial? I wasn't sure if that was lined up clearly or cleanly or not, is that the three twenty-two, fifteen?
Yes, it shows three twenty-two, fifteen.
And where do we sit as an average, uh, comparable, at the commercial level?
So the, the commercial bills are in here on these slides. What's shown on the state slide is for an average of fifty thousand gallons.
And then in terms of the fee, what is that, or the revenue, uh, based on that, 'cause you had three hundred and twenty-two for Freeport, um, the, as a fee, what's the, the state average? Do we have that calculation?
The three hundred and twenty-two is from the state.
Oh, it's from the state?
Yes.
That's the state average? Oh, so then Freeport's commercial average is what?
I think I saw one sixty-three.
Where are you seeing the one sixty-three?
On slide eight, the commercial bill for an average five thousand gallons is the one sixty-three.
Okay, down below. So we're well below average as well there, compared to the three twenty-two statewide, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That, to me, is a fair comparison when we're looking at like-sized cities, and I just wanna make sure that clarification is there, because there's a lot of numbers and a lot of slides being thrown around, I just wanna make sure that, that I can understand it, but also articulate it to the residents to, uh, reflect my own personal understanding, and certainly what the message is that you're, uh, providing, or at least the information that you're providing. So, um, it tells me that we're, we're below average on the commercial side, and that we're right there, um, at the average in terms of the residential.
So the residential is also from the state, and we're below average on that?
Right. On the state, I'm okay with that number being what it is, it's the local stuff that I'm always comparing, because it's just like anything else in real estate, it's location, location, location. And the reason I say this is because my next point is, is that one of the values that we have in the city of Freeport is the low cost of living. And I certainly don't want us to think that, okay, just because we're below these averages, let's go ahead and shore up the difference, and bring us to the same playing level, when we're a community that's looking to try to attract more development, tr- attract more investment, and certainly more residents and, and rooftops, and part of the, uh, the enticement is that, uh, we don't have the highest rates, or the average rates, but that in fact, we might have some discounts and, and some value that they might be able to capitalize on, and for that matter, attract them to be here. Um, so I, I, I want us to make sure that we, we weigh that particular, you know, talking point, or, or point of consideration. Um, and that leads me to the, a couple of other things here. You know, uh, Legal just mentioned here that there's a one percent threshold for state legislation that's coming up, and so now that, that's kind of a big wrench in the system here, right? Because now, we're thinking, shoot, this budget cycle here is not just about the foreseeable future, it's like, we gotta also plan for the fact that we're gonna, our hands are gonna be tied. And so if our hands are gonna be tied, we can't just raise rates or taxes, um, in the future, and we're limited at one percent, we really then gotta really manage the bottom line, is that right?
Uh, yes, sir, if that passes for the property tax.
So I guess the question is in terms of like, the capital projects, so then you mentioned, this only covers, you know, the water, but not really the capital projects, what are we looking at for capital projects, in the next year at least? And do we have it covered, or are we going to have to, uh, you know, develop a, a project line item in the budget for that capital project as it relates to the water and sewer? Or are we expecting to just be reactive? I'm just trying to understand, how, how proactive do we need to be on this?
Tonight, we're trying to be proactive, right now, we're in the red, we have to do something to get to the black.
Well, this just covers up, this just covers, or gets us back to ground zero from last year, I'm just trying to understand where we're gonna be when the bills hit for the capital projects, if we're gonna be in a good financial position?
This goes through the end of twenty-six, this is for the budget year we're looking at.
But this does not include any capital projects?
No.
Okay. So, yeah?
This is only cost of service that we're looking at, BWA and Veolia, this takes in to account nothing else.
And should this ever be considered as part of the capital project, um, servicing or, or funding?
Well, well, it could be, so one of the things that Ashley did was talk about putting together the city's first CIP that, that we know of, at least, are you aware of any CIP ever been done? So, a CIP is just a capital improvement plan, it's a five-year lookout, as far as what kind of capital that you'll need, and so it's, you know, water, sewer, roads, those kinda large, capital-intensive projects. So eventually, uh, once you have it compared, or compiled, and we got something the other day from Veolia about the systems that they're aware of, lines, water lines, sewer lines, as well as pumps and lift stations and all that stuff, so we've got that side of the equation, we, we need to get the other sides, you know, what buildings primarily, um, large capital expenditure projects, typically something that's over a hundred thousand dollars is what I'm used to, would go in this plan, and then you would know, year by year, you start laying it out, okay, and this year, we'll try to fund part of that, you know, and you spread those out, but once you have those identified, then you would come in, and typically, again, it's going to be rate increases, so you might borrow water, or borrow money from the Texas Water Development Board, uh, they typically give low-interest loans, a lot of times, they'll forgive the loans after you repay ninety-five percent of it, they'll do them at, at way, you know, a, a percent and a half below prime, so that's typically, and so when you borrow that money, then what you would do, rates would go up to start funding that payment back. So you, you dovetail the capital in with the rates, but right now, we're just trying to tread water and get up.
Oh, wow.
And so tonight, I mean, realistically, she needs an option for the majority of y'all, so that she can compile the budget when we come back, so that's kinda where we are right now, and then forward-looking at that capital, like what you talked about.
Well, you know, that, that tells me that, um, because our options are gonna be limited, and, and for that matter, um, the state law is going to limit what we can in fact raise through, um, through taxes or rate increases, that we're gonna either, um, rely on the revenue itself from the water that we sell, and/or possibly go out and take loans, because it doesn't sound like we could take it out of the general fund like we've been doing.
I mean, it really depends on how the hit comes, if it comes in five billion, you know, no, you don't wanna do that, if it comes smaller than you could possibly.
Well, that tells me then, um, you know, that's another, that's a huge variable, I mean, it's very limiting, so it, it, it really put, puts pressure on us here tonight to really try to maximize whatever we can here in terms of revenue.
Yeah, I mean, we...
And that, that to me points to, uh, option F at this point.
Yeah, we, we tried to paint a picture where we put the variables on the table for y'all, as far as revenue, as far as capital, as far as expecting what kind of increase you expect, uh, as far as like what Chris was talking about, what the legislature might do, you put all that together, it, you know, if you don't catch up now, uh, you're really, really, really gonna be in a hole next year, and then you come back with another large increase, you know? Uh, not the most digestible situation.
Let me ask, uh, another, um, question here as it relates to water rates, I mean, if the city's gonna be limited to one percent, and BWA comes back next year and says, hey, we need another twelve percent increase, how is that gonna be managed?
The water sewer rates are separate from the property rates, property tax rates?
Yes, so when they cap it, they, they cap on the property tax side of things, so that's where they're squeezing at, while on this side, typically, they've left the, the municipal utilities alone. Not saying that that'll happen forever.
Right.
But that, that's not been, right now, uh, they say you can recover your costs plus a reasonable rate of return, they don't find that, it's typically less than double-digit, I haven't seen anybody just get, you know, crazy with it, but, uh, yeah, that's, so that's primarily where revenue would be coming in for that system, it should be a standalone like what she's talked about repeatedly.
Okay, so the one percent's not gonna apply to the, the water?
Water side, no.
Okay, great.
But what, I think the picture Chris was trying to paint is the fact that you won't be able to continue taking money from your general fund, because that's where property taxes are going into.
Got it.
So you won't have the money there to move over to subsidize the water, yeah.
Which is what we, what, which is what we learned at the last meeting, we'd been doing incorrectly, out of five of the last, last six years, is that right?
I think so, yes, sir.
And then there was a million-dollar loan a few years ago.
Do you remember this million-dollar loan, Jerry?
That was, the loan was before us.
Twenty, I think it was in doubt in twenty, is that right?
Can you describe what that loan was about, just to educate me, please?
It was a loan from the general fund to, um, put cash into the water sewer fund, it had no cash at the time, so it, it took this loan out, and it's repaid, um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and it is listed in the audit reports, um, I think I did have notes on it in my backup, uh, at the presentation, the last meeting.
I think it's got two more years.
Yes, sir, I, I think twenty-six, and then twenty-seven will be the last payment to pay it all.
But each payment's been made? Each payment has been made every year?
Yes, sir.
But if we're dipping into the, the general fund to pay itself, it's almost like borrowing from yourself to pay yourself, right?
From Peter to Paul.
Well, it's from Peter to Peter, really. Um, yeah, that's no good. Um... Yeah, that answers my, my other question, my last question. Yeah, to me, it just, there's so many unknowns, and there's so many budget cuts or constraints that we're gonna be facing here. Um, I guess my last question actually was, to be clear, the four seventy-four would be for the ninety-eight percent of residents with a three-quarter inch pipe, is that right?
Yes, that would be correct.
And the twenty-two dollars would be for the rest?
On E and F, yes, that is correct.
I mean, for, actually, that's for E and F, what about G and H?
G and H include the small business restaurant as well.
You might move into that slide on number nine, yeah, so on that, on H, let me see here.
What?
H and F, let me look at F. So the twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents would be, uh, the impact on a monthly basis added to the current rates, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I know that the, uh, the sentiment at the last meeting was, everybody needs to, you know, all hands on deck, and here, and I, you know, I gotta say, what's been told to me is, why are we paying for a mistake City Hall made, why are we forced to pay that four seventy-four? And I can understand, hey, you know, everybody, let's, let's just all pitch in, but it is worth mentioning how we got here, and they're not wrong to make that criticism or that complaint, that they shouldn't have to be, uh, footing this bill this way. But that said, um, it's four dollars and seventy-four cents per household, and, uh, twenty-two dollars for every business, and, uh, I know that we say, hey, we don't wanna punish people for being successful, but, um, like I said, the, the cost of living and the value in being here in Freeport, even as a business owner, I think twenty-two dollars is a small price to pay, so I, I'd be leaning again, especially since we're looking at capital projects that aren't even being considered, I mean, it's a ten thousand dollar difference between F and H, and, um, we need every penny we can get, so I, I'd be leaning toward F, Mayor, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, I would like to say, back in twenty twenty-three, when we, um, adjusted the rates the last time, um, it was stated at that point that this is gonna happen again in a couple of years, you know, so we, we knew it was coming, um, and, and it's here. Um, I would also like to echo what Mr. Rollerson said earlier, if we concentrate on getting more rooftops in the city, guess what that does to the projected revenue that you're looking right here? Now, can you imagine if we had fifty or sixty or ninety new homes out there with that many people, that many more people buying that much more water? So, something to, um, to think about, Council. Any other questions or comments? There are none, let's move on. Next, we have a presentation on budget request items for fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six in the annual budget, Ms. Hurst.
Uh, yes, sir, sorry, trying to switch presentations. Okay, so tonight, we have the departments here, if they had supplemental, um, budget requests for this year, we're gonna give them ten minutes each to speak to justify their requests to you, um, we would like Q and A tonight, if, if there are questions, so we could try to nail these down, I'm really, really trying to get this budget, um, at least these big question marks, uh, taken down and, and get some definitive answers if we can. Um, the presentation order, I'll kick it off, and then we'll go to Donna, uh, Mr. Reggie with the building, uh, Chief Howell, Chief Motley, uh, Rudy will take over, uh, Mr. Pennington's gonna speak for Wade tonight, um, Brian's here for the golf course, and then Chief has a grant match request, and we had a couple of council requests, so that will be how y'all are gonna hear it tonight.
I've got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Each department will have ten minutes. Does that by chance include Q and A from Council?
Well, well, that also gives Rudy ten minutes for three departments, so, poor Rudy.
And it's up to two minutes, not necessarily have to take the whole time.
Okay, so I'm gonna kick it off so we can get going. So for the finance department, I have, uh, for myself, three requests, and then I'm speaking for another one for other people, um, I'm requesting that we transition our financial software to be web-based hosted, this would allow for maintenance and upgrades to be overseen in real-time, handled by the software company, reducing our downtime, more importantly, it would allow city employees to access the software from anywhere within the city, which is not currently the option. To access it right now, we have to be hardwired in at our desk, it means that it isn't available to be... It means that it isn't available to be used during a meeting, which for me creates quite a few hurdles. Additionally, to access it while working from home, it doesn't allow things like reports to be ran, meaning if I need to reference a budget report, I cannot access that unless I'm back in the office. It would give us correct capabilities that we currently already pay for, such as electronic record retention, but we are not fully able to implement it like it should be right now due to the software limitations. Overall, the request would be greatly beneficial to me and my very small department as well as many other citywide. The software company graciously offered to transition the city with a waived implementation fee. So it would just be the $27,221 recurring fee.
How much was that waived?
I don't have that with in me in front of me, but I can get it.
It was almost $30,000.
Uh, something along those lines, yes. The main reason that I would love to go to web-based hosting on top of those other reasons is that I could use the project accounting module. This would allow me to set a project up within the system and it could be tracked there, giving real time budget numbers for all of the projects and grants that the city has going on and we have a lot at one time. Currently, I do have to track those manually on a spreadsheet, which, don't get me wrong, it is doable, but it could be done much more efficiently within the software. The project accounting module is only available if we can transition to the web-based hosting. If approved, it would cost $3,470 a year. Last year, Council approved a recurring fee for $30,000 for the software called ClearGov. I was not involved in the demonstrations with the different options last year when talking about budget software. So I cannot speak about exactly what ClearGov ClearGov had told Mrs. L. However, I can attest to the fact that we are currently using, that what we are currently using is not a good fit for the city. I do want to continue to transition to be fully trans, fully financially transparent. And what we currently have is a manual fed data software. It is very time consuming for me and our accountant and it's not very user friendly. OpenGov is used in many cities and the closest user to us would be Brazoria County. It feeds data in real time from our financial software and it integrates with other software that our departments use. This allows for real time data to be viewed by anyone at any time. Council would get their own dashboard that has pertinent financial updates and information on it. The city manager would get a dashboard that shows departments KPIs and various financial information also. Budget request and forecasting would be done within the software as departments are also able to use it too. I do believe that this would be a fundamental step in ensuring full financial transparency while also freeing up a lot of the time that we are currently spending having to manually feed data with the software. ClearGov is ready to get implementation started. I'm sorry, that should say OpenGov. OpenGov is ready to get implementation started if Council approves the fee. Implementation would also include training those departments and users on how to use it, taking the burden off myself and the accountant. Overall, I was very impressed with the capabilities and I do ask that Council consider approving the one-time implementation fee. OpenGov has the same annual fee that ClearGov does, but with far more functionality that would benefit myself and many other citywide. Because they have also worked with so many other customers and heard the same complaints that I had with our current software, ClearGov, OpenGov worked very hard and brought in managers to get a final approval to bring their implementation costs down as low as they could to a one-time fee of $29,950, which is almost $15,000 lower than what is normally charged. I hope that Council is able to to agree and we can take advantage advantage of the offer that we would greatly benefit from. And then last is the JustFoya public information software request. And that comes forth specifically from the city secretary and the PD. We did do a demo with JustFoya and it allows for electronic submittals and tracking of public information requests. The admin and the PD departments would be able to set up their own webpages and options as they see fit when the implementation begins. The two cities that were used to show us the demonstration were Pearland and then League City for their PD page. I believe that this would also be a really great thing to help move the city forward. The admin and the PD department would split the one-time implementation fee of $1,007 and the recurring fee of $10,314 if approved by Council. Five and a half minutes, I'm done.
Good.
Thank you, Ashley. Council, any any questions for Ms. Hurst?
I just wanted to add, it's a it's a huge, I'm glad you really looked at the software. And one of the things that she said that it creates or or minimizes double entry. So when you feed stuff into the system, you don't want to have to go back to a spreadsheet and then do double data entry. Mistakes happen, problems happen that way. So the system having it seamlessly transfer across projects from what they book is preferable.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hurst, the total that that you're being that you're asking for the budget here is, are these four items in totality?
Uh, it's on the request list. Did they get the handout? Sorry, I don't have the total right in front of me.
So you're adding your hand, yes? Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm just looking at the 27, the 29, the three and the one.
In total is 71,962.
Thank you. No further questions, Mayor.
Ms. Hurst, can you tell me which is most important, one, two, three and four?
The budget software, the OpenGov.
That's number one.
One and three, right?
Yeah, the OpenGov would be number one. Number one and number two are kind of one in the same, so that would be my number two. Yeah, so we can only do the 3,400 if we do the 27,000.
So the JustFoya would be the, if we had to strike one, that's the one that you would say to strike? Although it would give heartburn to the city secretary.
I think I just inherited the presentation of it. It's really not, I don't do anything with the with the public info request, except provide info.
I think the city secretary and
And the PD.
Chief, please.
Yeah.
The 10,314 recurring, that would be split also between the admin and PD?
Yes, sir.
Council, any other questions?
I just had one on the are we going to go back to the to the water thing that she said she needed a something? I don't want to go back to it, but I'm talking about, are we going to make a decision for her tonight?
I have it as an action item tonight, if y'all want it, if y'all want to decide on it.
Council, any other questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Ashley, the moving end code from onsite to web host, uh, cloud. When you were looking into that, did they give you any guarantees of security and things like that?
Toby, can you, do you know about the security aspect? Sorry, I'm not IT. So I saw project accounting, that's what I asked about.
I'd have to double review the security guarantees. I know data guarantee is something they do.
I know that right now we don't two factor authorization. And he did mention that when we, if we went cloud, we would have two factor authorization or authentication, sorry.
Yeah, I can I can Q and A them, see what kind of guarantees they'll give us.
Okay. Totally different, but we should be doing two factor authentication. That's that should be number one thing. I I'm just, I'm curious as to their security. Neighbor just to the north of us had an incursion in their PD. This is financial more important. I'm not saying that's not important, but this is more important. And so I want to make sure that we're we're looking at if we're going to move to a web-based hosting, that all of the security is up to a standard. And then what type of guarantees we'll be receiving from that company? Such as, hey, if we do have an incursion or they have an incursion, what's their
Protocol?
Protocols, yes, sorry. Protocols. And that's that's something that I would like to know pretty soon, if we can get that before next meeting.
So it's the same company that we have now, Tyler Technologies? But I'll reach out to that account rep that I spoke with and Luke Tobian. Maybe we can hop on a call tomorrow and get some answers specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Council, anything else from Ms. Hurst under finance? Let's move on. Next, we have HR.
Good evening. Mine should also be short and sweet. I do want to tell you a little bit about what our two-person HR department's been able to do over the last year with some of the things that you allowed us last year. We've implemented our applicant tracking system, which has increased our online presence and increased the number of applications. We've done the digital onboarding, which has let us do e-verify. We've done a lot more digital training this year, including supervisor training. And the feedback from the supervisors that have taken that training has been good. They're like, wow, I actually learned something. So we are in the process of waiting for the results of our compensation study and we have done a lot of policy updates. So our requests for this year are certifications for the two HR staff from the Texas Municipal Human Resources Association. This is a brand new certification. The very first class will be held in November. It's a week-long class and you take a certification test at the end. It focuses on employment issues specific to Texas municipal governments, not nationwide, global, private entity. It's it's strictly Texas city government employment. And that would be a $1,500 per person or $30,000 one-time fee. The November class is full, but they are supposed to be opening up a couple of classes in the spring, so hopefully. And then a policy consultant to look at our policy manual and possibly reorganize, do some, there may be some combining of policies we can do. There may be some policies that are no longer even applicable. But I normally update policies when we have an issue. And I would really like to be proactive on the policy manual instead of reactive. The manual we are using was adopted in 2003 and it's just been revised and revised and revised and revised. So those are the two things that I am asking for this year, total of 6,000 in one-time fees.
Those are the numbers I like. And that's even better. Council, any questions for HR? One, one concern I have, and this is possibly something we'll discuss down the road. With certifications usually comes increase in pay.
$23.08 per paycheck, $600 per year.
Okay. Also, with certifications comes more of an attraction to other cities. So I would like to see, assuming we we get this passed, I would like to see some kind of retention clause.
Okay. Well, I plan to be here for the next four years. And I'm hoping to keep my assistant as long as we can keep her. She is worth everything and more that we pay her.
That's good. Council, any other questions or comments? Next, we have building permits.
Good afternoon. My name is Reggie Harris. I'm actually new to the department, actually five days in and I'm standing in front of Council already.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, so far as our party is just increase in advertising of $3,000. That's really a a direct reflect into posting. That's our team out there working hard, dealing with these dangerous buildings, notification, mail, mail postings.
Sounds easy.
So we don't have a one line item. So I gave you three, three minutes, that's all I needed.
I'm not going to ask you which one is the most important on your on your list either. Council, any questions or comments?
Welcome.
Absolutely.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Reg, can you just take a minute since you're so short and just tell them a little bit about yourself, your background?
Absolutely, absolutely. My name is Reggie Harris. Again, started here last week. Again, a pleasure to be here to serve the city of Freeport. Came from the city of Houston. Assistant Director for Code Enforcement for 21 years with the city of Houston. Retired from there, born and raised right here, Missouri County, Lake Jackson, I'm a Klueg guy, born and raised right there and was been retired a whole five months and got bored real quick. And just seeing the opportunity to come to work for Freeport, love Freeport, just really felt there was an opportunity for me to give back, you know, and talk to some other guys that graduated around that 1985 era. And, you know, and just really know a lot of people who are doing big things in other cities and other states. But they call Freeport Missouri County home. And really, one of my goals and my vision is really to be able to reach out to them and give people to come back to town again and give back to Freeport. Again, love the community, love the town. And I can assure you that I'm going to do all I can do again to make this city a great city that it should be and give it the respect. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have the Freeport Police Department. Come on up, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I'm going to take Donna and Ashley's extra time, so just add that on to mine real quick. So to start off and everything, I gave each of you, it's in the council packets, but then also gave you a printed copy as well. So when I talk about here the items for consideration, I want to first remind you of our vision. It's the vision of the Freeport Police Department to provide our community with a quality of life where they feel safe and secure. And that's what our focus has been on these budget requests. So the list of items are the same items that's been presented to you for the past couple of months, with our start and everything being about combining the PD and code budget. I have a notation there regarding House bill on your presentation. I know y'all have been informed information that if you do that, those are permanent numbers and that's actually incorrect information. And I provided y'all the House bill number so you can be able to research that on your own. So that does not, that does not apply to Freeport. Our population does not constitute that. So if we did do a combined budget and we separated those department later, those items could be separated again later. So just for consideration on that. The next two things I'm really going to hit heavy on are regarding the COLA on the matrix and for PD staff in addition to the overtime increase. The next page and everything I have there for the overtime increase, so doing an increase for the department budget of overtime. Currently, we start off as a deficit and $15,000 on day one because we don't have enough overtime to cover for our holiday hours. For the patrol and dispatch, holiday hours count as hours worked and that therefore pushes them over that 80-hour threshold and they receive overtime for that. So every time we have a holiday at 13 and a half holidays a year, with their overtime rate puts us right shortly under 135,000. So the increase on that and everything would be to be able to allow us to do other items such as our events, courts, trainings, beach patrol, the different things that we do. I have the last 10 years of overtime that's been provided to you there on the side of that chart. And I know the big question is in the 23, 24 year, what happened during the overtime on that year? And so therefore, I've also included And so therefore, I've also included some of those items that happened. We received some incorrect data on beach patrol. Now that we've gotten correct data, we've turned around and changed how we do our beach patrol. We did the Citizens Police Academy, which was at the request of counsel. And unfortunately, we can't pull people off the streets to do that. That's extra personnel that has to come in and do all those for several months. We had over 80 community events, which we looked at and said, this is entirely too much, and we've backed off now and changed our list for that. We had some improper timekeeping that was discovered, and we've gotten that squared away now. We had an evidence audit that was performed. We had to do some preparation for that. And then unfortunately, the passing of Captain Gilchrist. And so we were very tied up with that as well. Onto the next page, I have that safety is the priority at the top there. And that ties back to our vision statement on what we want for our community, for them to be able to have that safe community. So when we say safety is the priority, we're talking about taking care of our citizens. And so everything that we do and everything that we focus on is to be able to provide our citizens with the best, safest atmosphere that they can have. So in order to do that, we have to start off with staff. Currently, we're in a deficit of four patrol and one dispatch opening. And we have concerns that we're looking at a catastrophic, catastrophic, truly, truly catastrophic, gentlemen, issue that is going to come before us if we can't get our people taken care of. You have to understand, right now, there's 15 cadets in the police academy between Freeport, Lake Jackson, Klute, and Angleton. There's more than 15 openings between those four agencies. That's not all of Missouri County. That's just these four agencies I'm talking about. This is no longer the market of we get to pick and choose. This is their market. They're the ones that's picking and choosing where they want to go to work. And for the generations nowadays, it's bottom dollar. It's who's going to pay the best for me to be able to go to work there. So when you compare us to these other cities and where we are, when we're several dollars behind those cities, it makes it difficult. We didn't receive the COLA last year on the matrix. And if we don't receive one again this year, we're just doing nothing but getting further and further behind. When you go to the next page, you look at a six-month Klute officer makes almost as much as a four-year officer at Freeport. A new hire at Angleton and Lake Jackson make almost as much as a seven-year officer at Freeport. And a new hire at Iowa Colony makes almost as much as a Freeport corporal. I might be biased, but I'm going to say we're better than all those cities, and we're better than those agencies. We have better trained staff, more professional staff, and we have put our standard higher to be able to provide our citizens with better. And so these agencies that are paying more for lesser-trained officers, we got to take care of our people. So failure to retain is expensive. When I talk about retaining individuals, retention is an investment into your people. When you look at the numbers of what we've replaced over the past several years, it's an average of $30,000 is what it cost us to replace somebody. About $28,000 for a dispatcher and roughly around $32,000 to $39,000 for an officer. Just kind of depending on their background depends on how long we have to spend on that. And I do have a breakdown of that in one of the other pages for you to be able to look at later. So how can we change this? The big thing is to be able to provide a competitive salary and retain them. On that next page, we provide you a kind of a glimpse of view, if you will, for officers and dispatchers only, but just to be able to give you a little bit of glimpse of the pay matrix. I know oftentimes, again, you get fed misinformation about, well, they get 3% to 5% raises every year. No, they don't. There's years that they don't even receive a quarter. And when you do the breakdown on what those raises are and what the net is at the end of that, congratulations on your years of service. You can now go through the Chick-fil-A drive-thru and get you a meal for lunch. Not one for your spouse, not one for your children, just for you, because that's how small these raises are. And I've made the statement time and time again that we're not offering these guys peanuts. We're offering them peanut shells. And nobody wants to eat the peanut shells. They're going to look for that agency and everything that's going to provide for them better. If you look at the COLA history, the city over the past several years has done a total of 20% in COLA history. The United States has done a recommended 23.2. The police department's at 13.5. So we are 10% behind what the United States is. So when I say, again, safety is the priority, my concern is if we have more people leave, we're going to have to have a decrease in service. It's not that that's what we want to do, it's that's what we will have to do. There will be certain calls for service that we're not going to be able to respond to. Those extra little things that we do now for our citizens and our community, those things are going to be done. Those events that we do hold near and dear, those will no longer happen. So those 20 events will be down to zero events, because again, we won't be able to have the staffing level for those events. I've worked beside a city that became a felony response city, because that was all that they had the staffing to be able to do, was to respond to felony and in-progress calls. And gentlemen, that's not where we want to be. The frequency of seeing officers patrol in the neighborhood will be on a decline, because again, if I've only got one officer for Ward AMB and one officer for C and D, they're just not going to be able, citizens are going to be like, where are the officers at? They're not seeing them as much as they'd like to now. But if we continue to have a decline, it's going to be the bigger problem. I have written right here, our citizens deserve the best Freeport ever. There's a lot of things I don't agree with on Councilman Pena, and he knows it. We've had our heated discussions before, but that statement, that statement I agree with. Our citizens do deserve the best Freeport ever, and our police department wants to provide them that. So when we look at what are other agencies doing in checking around, they're doing 4% to 19% COLA and raises, 4% to 19%. And the discussions being had to not do one here at all. They're doing sign-on bonuses of $5,000 to $20,000, and they're doing tuition reimbursement for academy for those individuals that put themselves through. So what do we recommend? We recommend at least a 5.5% cost of living adjustment to all the employees and then also applied across the matrix. Sign-ons for the first responders. And when I say first responders, here in a little while, you'll also hear from Chief Motley. They're dealing with some of the same trials and tribulations as well. And so we'd like for this to just go across to all of our first responders. Tuition reimbursement, again, for the academy. And then a future redesign of the pay metrics. We have got to do a better pay metrics to be able to retain and recruit our staff. So recommended proposal for that hiring incentive for new first responders, doing $5,000 total. That's $1,000 at the start. Walk in the door, welcome to Freeport. We want you here, here is $1,000. Then at their one-year mark, they'd receive $2,500. At their two-year mark, they'd receive, I'm sorry, $2,000. And at their two-year mark, they'd receive $2,000. So let's just say replacing five officers right now will cost you $5,000 upfront, $12,500 at year one, $12,500 at year two, for a total of $30,000 for five officers. That's the same price that it costs every time we have to replace one. And I showed you all ago, you've already thrown away over a half a million dollars in that failure to retain. So let's put some work in to be able to retain them right now. The academy reimbursement, it's kind of the same concept for academy reimbursement. It is up to $5,000. Depending on which academy they go to, there's different ones. Brazesport, University of Houston, Gus George. And so they all have different amounts in addition to they have in-county and out-of-county fees associated with that. But once they complete their field training program, we'd look at reimbursing them 25%. Then upon their one-year, 25%, and then upon completion of their two-year, the 50%. So the restrictions, Freeport must be your first agency. I'm not going to hire a 20-year officer and give him, you know, academy reimbursement. And you must have graduated within the last three years. And you say three years, that kind of seems like a long while. But I have currently six officers that would be eligible for this. They're trying to make the decision right now if they're staying at Freeport. Giving them something like this, because if we're giving a new hiring on bonus, they're like, well, I could go to this agency and get the hiring bonus. Well, let's do something to retain those individuals. So if you did that for those six officers, again, at about $5,000 each, you're at $30,000. See the retention here, we're going back to that $30,000 again on what it costs every time we look to replace an officer. That future redesign of the pay matrix, like I said, employees decide in that first two to five years if they're going to stay right now. Freeport's averaging about three years for an officer. And that's because, again, they're getting peanut shells. And so they realize that, and then they decide they've come here, they've gotten the training, they've had good experiences, but at the end of the day, they have a family to provide for, and we're going to support them on that. We don't want to lose them, but we understand the aspect. If you can go down the road and do less calls for 20 grand a year more, then I completely understand that. And I don't think these guys are expecting a 20 grand a year pay raise, but they're expecting something. They need something and everything as a motive of good faith on staying here. Starting pay's been that same for two consecutive years because of no COLA. And so currently, so for total raises for five years, not per year, but a total of five years doesn't even equal $1.50 an hour for an officer and doesn't even equal $1.25 for a dispatcher. And again, once you do that breakdown of net for officers, you're at about $15 an extra paycheck and $12 extra paycheck for dispatch. And that's after five years of service. And so I ask you, gentlemen, would you stay at your current employer if after five years of service, that's all that they gave you, was just $15 net? That new matrix is going to provide us that better recruitment tool to be able to elevate and retain staff. Currently, there's no steps after 19 years of service, people cap out. And in the past, we wouldn't even give them COLAs once you hit that 19 level. So we need to be able to encourage our, you know, veteran staff to be able to stay and continue to invest in our city. Applying that 5.5% will try to get us to matching up with the other agencies. Again, we're not going to be anywhere close, but we got to start somewhere. And this is that first step forward in that. And so I'd like to do a redesign of that matrix and to be able to look at that for our next fiscal year to be able to, again, help increase with that retention aspect. And so why are we wanting to do this? Because our citizens deserve a safe Freeport. Again, that's our vision. That has been our vision since I came here. That's the vision that the department as a whole voted on. And so we want the same and everything for our community to feel that safeness, and we want to provide that to them. Because our staff are key to that change needed in Freeport. You can't have a safe Freeport without the staff. That is what is needed at the end of the day. And because city officials want and expect the best Freeport ever. Again, lots of things I don't agree with with Councilman Pena, but that statement I do agree with. We want the best Freeport ever. Staff's going to continue to leave if they don't feel they're treated fairly, and non-competitive compensation is a major determinant in that. If we can't retain our staff and recruit additional staff, we cannot adequately serve our citizens, and our citizens deserve exceptional service. And so we can, should, and we must do better. We have to do better and provide our community with the best that we can.
14.
Ah, that's about Donna and Ashley's time, so. Okay, I'll go for questions now. I tried to talk as fast as I could, I'm sorry.
Oh, did my mind timeout?
I couldn't see it, there was a glare on it, so I couldn't even.
14, no way.
Yeah, okay.
Counsel, any questions for Chief? Yes, sir.
All right. Great job. I don't know, you sound like one of them.
I'm like an infomercial, if you act now.
$5,000, $5,000, $5,000 here, $10,000, $10,000 next.
Oh, an auctioneer, okay, yes.
You did good. You almost crammed that in in 10 minutes.
I was trying, I was trying.
I think you stood in front of the mirror.
I practiced in the bathroom all weekend long, all weekend.
Billy Mays.
Yes.
You did a good job. Well, you know, Chief, I think you know how me and you stand. I got much respect for you. And I hope the officers, you know, feel the same way as you are. You know, be fighting for your fellow officers and your staff. And I do understand that the police department is like at the top of, you know, the city. Like, we need to take care of our police department. The police department takes care of our city. You know, and we need experienced officers and, I don't know, we don't need a lot of hot heads and stuff like that. And, you know, sometime you get that. But I think we have a good staff here, a good staff of officers. I haven't heard any complaints about our policing staff here. You know, I would hear. I came from that area in the streets and stuff, so, you know, I don't hear nothing about this police department. That's a good thing. You know, so I will be one of the ones, you know, fighting for you to get that COLA. I think, you know, especially last year, they didn't get nothing, and we had this big, you know, misunderstanding on how it is. And some people put up, well, they get this matrix or whatever that. I mean, you know, like, I work for the county, and we get, we in a step of, that's how we get raises too. And we get them every October, but, you know, we substitute, you know, 1%, 3%, you know, 2.5%. So I know what that looked like on your check. So, I mean, and we be discouraged sometimes, and, you know. And the last year, we finally got a 6%. But we have been backed up since COVID came out, since 2020. And they've been chump-changing us. But, you know, I would imagine that it hit different if I was an officer, because, you know, I think that's a bigger risk, and I'm risking my life to protect this city and the citizens. So it would hit me a little different if I get a 1% raise and I was an officer, you know. 2%, you know, because we get frustrated, we get over it. But at the same time, I know how hard it is, what it looks like, how hard it is for you to retain officers and keep officers. So it's a lot of things in here, you know, that we have to go over. But like I said, I think you deserve a raise, even the overtime. I mean, we say we don't want to, you know, raise overtime, but, you know, when we have events and then when officer's not out there, then people complaining, you know, oh, well, else something jump off. Well, they ain't have but two officers out here. Well, they have but one officer out here. They couldn't even control, you know, the situation. So I get it, I get it, we need them, you know. Now, I can't just look through it, because it's a lot, you know. Can't just drop the bag off and, you know, you just going to get everything. And I'm just one vote, but, you know, we have to understand some of these things. And we compare to some of these cities with our colony. And, man, them people are growing so, and they have so much revenue coming in and so much, you know, that their city can't afford to pay these guys like this and these ladies like this. So, you know, I can't look at cities like that and say that we need to get paid what they paying. But we do need to take care of our officers more.
And I'm not talking about losing to Sugar Land and Texas City. And I'm talking about just agencies that are right here with us.
I've seen our colony on here, I've seen.
But this is who, yeah, this is who we're losing to.
I understand, I understand. But when they're making this type of money, I mean, you know, at the same time, the revenue that we're bringing in here at Freeport, I mean, it doesn't match up with that. But like I said, we need to get our officers closer, you know, to where they need to be, to where they can be comfortable. And, you know, make a decent living. And make a fortunate living, yeah, and feel appreciated. So I understand that, you know. I'm going to do the best I can to see if we can, how we can get close to that or make some, most of these happen. But we need to go through some of it too and see what's priority, what's mostly after the raise. We already know that, you know, and overtime, we already know that that's up there at the top.
So our list in the packet is in order. That list in the packet is in order, like, number one going down.
Okay, yeah. Because everything on here, I mean, obviously, may not be able to do all of that. But we can put some on it, you know, get halfway there and stuff like that. But, you know, it's a good plan. The $5,000, the new hires, I mean, you know, that's a good idea to help get officers here in Freeport.
And again, like I said, there's agencies that are doing the 10, 20.
Yeah, yeah.
And I realize that, you know, we only have so much money. And like I said, I extend this, met with Chief Motley and spoke with him on it as well, since he's gone through some of the same trials and tribulations. So we thought at least $5,000 is at least something to be able to show.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea, you know, to do that. Either all of that or the police academy payment deal, you know. That's a good idea, you know. If you can't do both, do one, you know, but... I just think it's a good presentation. Hopefully, we can get this taken care of. That's all I got.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for Chief?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you stated we have 20 events in Freeport that your officers...
We had over 80, I think it was 82 or 83, and we've dropped it back down where there's only going to be about 20 that we're going to participate in now.
Okay. Okay. And are all of those in Freeport?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because...
I've, I've cut out, I was like, if it's not in the city of Freeport, then I, I was like, not to not support our other cities, but I just felt like the money needed to stay here in our community.
Okay, yeah. Because, um, I've heard there was overtime being paid for events in Pearland, Angleton.
So when...
And that's, that's unacceptable.
For like Pearland, when they hosted the Veterans Day Parade, when it rotates around the county, we will still participate in that, whether it's Pearland, Alvin, because when it comes to Freeport, those cities come here and work in our city to help with that. So that's kind of the agreement amongst the county, is wherever it's held, each agency tries to send two officers to that city to be able to help with the traffic control needs.
Okay.
And we do that for the Veterans Parade and then for the, um, for the Fair and Rodeo Parade.
Okay.
But like Holiday of Lights, like we've, we've done a float in that before. I've said, you know, we're not buying material to do a float, to participate in that, things of that nature.
Okay. Um, and do any of our officers volunteer their time for these events?
Usually, no. We, we have had some that do, but usually, no.
Because I was, um, told that previous regime, the officers volunteered their time for these events.
They, they volunteered, but they were compensated in other ways. And that was part of that timekeeping system that I was not willing to falsify records on.
Okay. Okay.
So at the time, there was no comp time for the city. And so if you come out to this event for me for two hours, I'll give you Friday off.
Okay.
Um, if you come and do this for me on Saturday, you can have two days off next week.
But that, that wasn't what was put on the timesheet, right?
No. So then on the timesheet, it was turned around and showed that you were here and you worked those two days, when the reality was that you didn't. And those were things that I was not willing to do.
Okay. Um, and then your vehicle replacements. What, what is an admin vehicle?
So admin vehicle and everything, to be honest, it would be the vehicle for Lieutenant Graham. Lieutenant Graham's currently driving twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, a twenty seventeen vehicle. So those vehicles don't have to have the full police outfit, if you will. Um, where, like for the patrol vehicles, those are police package vehicles, and those do cost more. Um, for the admin vehicles, we get more just a standard vehicle, um, that doesn't have all the same whistles and bells, so it does not have the same cost effect on it.
Okay. And a CID?
Uh, CID is for the detectives. Um, so one of our, one of our detective unit is, remember the year, is that a seventeen also? So that is also a, a twenty seventeen vehicle as well.
Okay. Um, and then what is, uh, LPR cameras? What, what does LPR stand for?
Oh, license plate reader.
Oh, okay.
And so currently, we do have LPR cameras at, around the entrances of the city. Um, some of those, the, those cameras are no longer in, you know, they're at the end of life aspect, so they're no longer eligible for any type of maintenance on those. And some of those cameras don't have service to them anymore.
Okay.
And so we are going for a grant on that, whether or not we receive it or not. I mean, we, we don't know for sure on that one.
Okay. Um, server relocation, is that within the building or is it...
So yes. So currently, our server is located in Detective Fernandez's office. Um, and that does not meet CJ's compliance, um, because it is not in a secure location. It's in just a kind of a closet, if you will. Um, and so we're looking to relocate that into the room that has our nine-one-one equipment, that is a locked room. It, you know, has limited access to it. And then it's also going to have a separate air conditioning system to be able to help keep it, maintain temperature control.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Council, any other questions or comments?
Just wanted to make a quick comment that, uh, the Chief could correct me on the numbers, but you're four short currently. You have two looking. You've been four short since May was the, when you last, lost your last fourth person. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, we lost it.
Okay, so since May, we have been able to recruit an officer. That's, you know...
I've, I've, I'm not willing to lower the standards. We turned down a, one applicant for a DWI on duty. Uh, we, we turned down an applicant and everything for, granted, prior to their law enforcement career, but still, they were part of transporting, transporting drugs. Um, we turned down an applicant for, um, lying on the stand. Um, so I mean, again, we could, we could fill those spots, but at the end of the day, we're not willing to, we're not willing to sacrifice our, our quality that we want still for our citizens.
We appreciate that.
And so overall, when you look at it, she's put a very comprehensive plan together. One, you try to stop the bleeding. So you're trying to prevent your people from going elsewhere. That's the five and a half on top of the matrix. You know, please stay here. So that's sort of the, the short-term solution for it. The col- the, uh, academy reimbursement and the sign-on bonus is to try to get those people. So you, you got to think this a couple of different ways. One, you know, you always think, I mean, agencies copy each other. So you see a great idea, somebody else is going to try it right behind you. So if, if we launch this thing, say in October, we'd probably be able to grab those cadets quicker out of those academies. We've got one that's graduating, I think in May and one in December. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, that's why we're trying to grab those people. So between both the sign-on bonus and the academy reimbursement, you're going to be the front-runner in getting those people. Uh, while our hourly rate may not be as high, even with the five and a half, that's a five to ten thousand dollar carrot you're dangling in, in front of those, of those kids. Uh, so you're trying to get somebody in to replace those four, uh, and then anybody else that might leave. And then you're trying to keep those people here. So holistically, you know, she's got a really solid plan.
Chief, um, you know, I, I kind of like the academy reimbursement idea. And I like the fact that you have it broken down to where it's paid out in three years. And I understand, you said, we have six officers at this point that would qualify for this?
Yes, sir.
Um, if we, if we pass this, um, I would like to see, because someone coming straight off the, off the streets, we're requiring them to be here at least three years, according to this. And if we decide to do this and we include the six that, um, currently would, uh, would fall under this, um, I would like to see some kind of requirement for them as well.
We can, we can have something drafted up as well to be able to, I mean, both of them would have, you know, a document drafted up. But for those that are already here, we could alter, we could alter that as far as for the here and now that they continue to stay.
Yeah, because if they're, they're here two and a half, two and a half years and we give them, give them the money and then in six months, they're gone, then, um, was it, wasn't a win-win.
Right. No, yes, sir.
Um, Council, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a call.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for the, uh, presentation, Chief. Um, I'm just curious, did every council member get a chance to meet with, with you and Lieutenant Graham?
No, sir. Like I said, I, I met with you and you because y'all two asked the most questions. And so that's why I was like, I reached out to y'all on Thursday and said, hey, would you be willing to come by, by on Friday? And if there's something that I'm missing, I wanted to make sure to be able to try to have that for y'all tonight.
Well, thank you. Um, and thank you for your time on Friday. Uh, for those of the, for those, uh, that are watching at home, I, I want to let everybody know that, uh, we got about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve officers, maybe thirteen with dispatch in the audience tonight. I don't know if the camera can see that far in the back. But I'm glad you guys are here. Um, I won't go into all the questions that I have. Uh, we went through them here, I, I know, with you in the meeting. And for those that are curious, uh, it was about a three-hour meeting. It was supposed to only be a one-hour meeting, but Chief had a lot of questions.
Oh, okay.
No, but, um, you know, we, uh, we went a few rounds on various things and I got a lot of education, not only from the Chief, but also from Lieutenant Graham, and I wanted to share that. But I also want to make sure that the public understands, um, and for that matter, the, the police department understands, um, a couple of things here. I'm sure the Police Association understands this. There's a, uh, a state law about defunding the police. And it's my understanding, at least for myself, and I don't know that there's any other councilmen here tonight, or tomorrow, or yesterday. And I could be wrong. I haven't had a chance to speak with them. And in fact, it's illegal for me to speak with the rest of the officers. But I can speak for myself. But before speaking for myself, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what the law is. And I forget what that House Bill number is.
Nineteen hundred.
House Bill nineteen hundred. It's the, uh, it makes it illegal to defund the police. And I want to make sure that everybody understands what that means. That means that the budget that we had last year cannot be lowered. So nobody, at least not myself, I can't speak for the other councilmen or the mayor, but nobody is talking about reducing the budget from last year. That would actually be illegal. So if, uh, if Mayor Kane wanted to reduce it, he couldn't even do it because it's illegal.
There, there is a correction though on nineteen hundred, unless I'm mistaken. I think we've talked about this before. It doesn't apply to us because of our population.
That's what I'm saying, the population.
I think you have to be over two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty? Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand. So we could, but that was never a discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, so there you have it. There might be somebody that might want to do it because they could do it. But it's my understanding, there's, there's nobody looking to even try to do that. It's, it's never been on the radar. It's never been on the discussion. No suggestion. What we have been discussing really and trying to decide well, how we move forward, not only with the police department, but with every budget since, we are in a tight budget, is to say, hey, how much can we give for the ask? So every department's asking, hey, we need the same from last year, but we also need a little bit more. And so I just want to make sure that everybody is abundantly clear on this because there's a whole bunch of like political baloney going out in social media and, and for that matter, the public. And I get calls from residents about defunding the police. There is no defunding of the police. What we are talking about is how much are we going to invest in our police department for the next year, so that our police department is both competitive and providing our citizens safety. But I also want to make sure that I'm clear on one thing, that if, um, in the worst-case scenario, if there was just a zero, if the council were to decide, well, we're not doing anything, we're just going to keep it the same as last year. No one's suggesting, and this was asked of me, no one is suggesting from the police department or the Police Association, that services would be not rendered and safety would be less, and that it would just be a mass exodus and there'd just be no law enforcement and, and there'd just be a lawless city. Is that, is that a, a fair, uh, response to those asking, hey, what happens, you know, if they don't get all of the things that they're asking for? Well, it's the same thing with all the other departments. All the other departments are not going to get what they're asking for. The police department, I think, take, requires a special consideration because of the safety and security that it provides the community. But I just want to make sure that we placate or that we, we allay the concerns of the residents that say, you know, what if you guys only give twenty-five percent? Are they going to retaliate and withhold services? You know, or are they going to forget Mayor Kane where he lives when he has an emergency call because he voted against the fifty percent raise versus the twenty-five percent raise or, you know, or the full raise? And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the police department is not a political beast in that regard. Am I, can we get that on record to say that that is the case?
So at the end of the day, if, you know, like I have on here, well, I'll use Beach Buggy for example, you know. I'm not going to have, you know, people that are like, they're not going to get us a new Beach Buggy. That's it. We're, we're walking out. We're done. Um, but at the end of the day, if they continue to not receive that cola, then they're going to look at agencies that do.
Yeah.
Um, it's not that they're just going to walk out right now. And it's not that they're going to fold their hands up like a toddler and say, well, then I'm not going to that call.
Yeah.
Um, because they took an oath. And they're still going to do their job to the best of their ability. I have no doubt on that. But at the end of the day, they're probably going to look at their options. They're going to look at the options of these other agencies that are giving the cola, that are continuing to grow on their police department.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I have to, I mean, just add on to that, you know, the, the, the problems that we've been experiencing, they're not able to field the officers since May. Those kinds of problems are just going to continue to exacerbate. And I mean, it's, you know, is it, are they going to walk off like you said now? They're going to continue to do the job that they can do to the best of their abilities. But, you know, another sort of odd, uh, side to think of is, is this happened in my, my prior agency, is, uh, uh, the officers, just as they did with the petition to vote on civil service, uh, they can do the same thing on a petition for a pay raise. Uh, and in ninety-two, at my agency, I knocked on doors. I got that petition. I mean, hundreds of us did that. And the, the citizens voted a fourteen percent pay rates on us. And so those officers, same officers that would be knocking on those doors, are going to be taking this sort of data, could, uh, take this sort of data and present it to the citizens. And those citizens then would make whatever decision that they make on that. And so it's generally better to try to take, you know, you eat an elephant in one bite at a time. And that's kind of the plan that she brought forward is, you know, then next year, she'd be looking at the, at the matrix. But, uh, this would be, you know, a, a much better approach, kind of like at the water. We skipped a couple of years and now you got to take a big bite at that apple versus, you know, like this, trying to take small bites at that apple.
And apparently, y'all have already had to do that several times in the past, where y'all have had to do a, it was one year, there was an eighteen to twenty-six percent increase on different positions. Um, and it was because of just falling further and further behind the curve. And so instead of having to make these huge leaps, you know, every few years, let's be consistent. And so then that way, it's not as hard of a hit.
And the, the other reason about applying the matrix, or I'm sorry, applying the cola to the matrix is that, again, even if you look at that matrix, I, I, I've never worked in a place where the matrix stayed stable. So if you had someone that came in and worked a couple of years and then left, that starting pace stayed the same for two years. If they left in three years, so you're three years behind. You would never want to not apply the cola to the matrix, especially when the matrix has one percent in between those years. I mean, the, that percentage is small enough that it was clearly intended, when it was designed, for a cola to be applied on top of it. If, if those, if those percentages were large, then that would be a different story. But I talked to two different employee, what, employees. One was going to max out this year if we didn't apply the cola to the matrix. And, and they had just flat out told me, it's, it's not a threat. I'm just not going to stay here and continue to work for the same money year after year. I can go somewhere else and start my retirement. But that's the disincentive that we have at nineteen years of service. It's a zero percent increase at twenty years of service, and you don't get a cola, you know. So you're, you're incentivizing your senior people to go elsewhere, which is kind of, you know, I wouldn't like to say, backwards, you know.
Well, thank you for that. And I appreciate you sharing that. A lot of people may or may not know that our esteemed city manager here is also a commissioned officer and has that background. So appreciate your, your input on this. And certainly, you're, um, you're, you're currently commissioned, so you, um, you can appreciate the risks that are being taken. And I want to, I don't want to take anything away from that. But let me, uh, let me ask a quick question here. On the Freeport Police Association, the representatives for the Freeport Police Association, that's Officer Harris that spoke earlier?
Sergeant Harris.
Sorry, excuse me. And who were the others that are the representatives for the Freeport Association? I'm just curious.
Um, can I ask Sergeant Harris to come up then?
Sure, that'd be great.
Because I don't want to misspeak. Is he still here?
That'd be great.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Sergeant Harris. I just don't want to misspeak because I know they have certain positions.
Okay.
Hey, so I want to introduce, I'm the president of the association. This right here is my sergeant-at-arms. This is my new treasurer. Our secretary's not here, and this is my vice president behind me.
Okay.
Sergeant Willard.
Corporal Miller.
Corporal Curtis.
Thank you, guys. I, um, I wanted to make sure that, um, I could put a, um, a face to a name or for that matter, to the association. And it's, it's important that the public understands, the association are our officers. They are the guys who are boots on the ground. I've seen... I've seen every one of you guys out on the streets, certainly, Willard and, and Miller, um, in Ward A, you know, helping them chase down folks that are trying to break into cars and had them, had them on foot chase. And I won't go into stories where, um, I, I helped out a little, or just kind of pointed in the right direction for the community, or for the, for the officers there to make sure that the community was safe. But, um, you know, I wanted to just let you guys know that the conversations that I had with the chief on Friday, and Lieutenant Graham was also in that meeting. Is that, you know, the, uh, the biggest takeaways are that, yeah, we have some, some serious needs, and we need to make sure that we, we become competitive. And, um, you know, we're going to have to decide what's the give and take on all of this here. But I, I don't, I didn't have any other specific questions, other than I really wanted to know who the association members were. Uh, I guess the other question I have is, what level of participation is the police department as a whole in, uh, involved in the police association? Is it a hundred percent, uh, participation?
Almost a hundred percent, with the exception of a few. When we formed the union, one of the requirements was that a majority of our officers be members of CLEET to form it, for CLEET to officially recognize us. So, I'd say probably ninety-five percent, with the exception of a few people who don't participate.
Okay, that's a good number, ninety-five percent. So, you guys certainly, in my opinion, would speak for the majority of the police department.
Well, I would hope so.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, um, that's good to know, I don't have any other questions in relates, in relation to the association at this point, but thank you very much. Sure?
Hey, I just want, uh, all of the council and the citizens of the city of Freeport to know that, no matter where we go from here, from this day forward. We're not going to stop doing our jobs to what we have sworn an oath to and bound by the law to do. The services will not lack, we will continue to act in a professional manner under this administration.
That's wonderful to hear. I know that you guys are sworn, um, taking an oath, and your, your commission, your actual license, is violated if you don't uphold those. But, um, it goes without saying, but I appreciate you, in fact, iterating that out loud, Corporal Miller. And, um, I'm looking forward to having those conversations, but I could tell you, the other thing I want to make, make a point to state, is that. The, one of the bigger things that was also brought out from that meeting was, it's, it's abundantly clear that we have a, a payment disparity, um, for this fiscal year. But what it really also brought to light was that our matrix also needs to be updated. And so, um, I don't want to mix the two, I want to make sure that, you know, we, we do apples and oranges in the right way. So, for the budget, for the fiscal year, as it relates to whatever the, uh, the state rules are, and the state laws are, and what we can increase, um, on the books. And I have a couple of other legal questions here in a minute, but I want to make sure that everybody understands, especially the association. Is that it's my, I appreciate the idea that we need to get on par and very competitive, but that also, we need to make sure that we update this matrix. Because it's my understanding that the matrix is not right, and this is creating additional problems. So, I don't want us to get confused, I don't want anybody to have any false expectations in the police department, that we're going to solve all of those problems in this budget. But those, because a half of the, half of those problems, I think, are also, are mostly in the, in the matrix. I think if the matrix was right, it would have probably remedied a lot of this, uh, that we're dealing with now, um, in terms of COLA. And, um, you know, and for that matter, all the incentives of the pay, so, we, we'll get into all of those weeds, but I just wanted to let you guys know that that was my takeaways with the chief, and I had some other questions for the chief, but thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And Chief, and I appreciate you mentioning, uh, you know, the, the felony state of some cities, or the non-felony state. Right now, in terms of the total calls, what percentage of those are felony-related, um, would you say as a percentage for the city of Freeport in the last year?
Percentage?
Well, you were, you were describing how the, going forward, if, you know, if we end up having, uh, you know.
Like, what percentage of our calls are felony?
Correct.
Oh, um, I wouldn't want to give you a number, because I don't have that. See, if you'd asked me Friday, I would have had that for you tonight, but.
I get it, I, I was just, uh, you know, trying to.
Yeah.
Catch everything else that you were saying there, and it was, it was a great, actually, very informative, logical, and, and educational conversation, so I thank you for that. The other question I have here is, is that, where the other section of the, the conversation that I want to get into is the incentivization of the police department. And I know we're talking about the academy reimbursement, and we're talking about these bonuses. And, um, and I, my conversation on this was, or my talking point on this, and, was, uh, that we got to make sure that we, we make the best effort here. Not only to, uh, ensure that our, our police officers are, um, paid competitively, but that we also take care of the city. And that's to make them safe and secure, is, I think is what you had on, um, spoke to me on Friday, but also here tonight. And I'm thinking about incentivizing, how do we get, um, the numbers that the police department's asking for? And to me, it's a combination of two things, there's the money side, but then there's the retention side. You know, it's kind of like when we talked about HR getting that training, happy to do it, but we got to make sure that they're going to stick around. And so, I, I want to make, um, you know, my, my request on that is, is that I like the, uh, the incentive side of it all. But I want to make sure that we have an incentive where, um, the officers are given housing bonuses, you know, down payment assistance. And this is a conversation, um, you know, just kind of doing the math over the weekend, it's thirty thousand dollars we lose, we lose thirty thousand dollars. Um, or thirty-two thousand dollars, I think, per one sheet, you had thirty-two thousand on one and thirty on another, but let's just say thirty. Half of that, even if we just took half of that at fifteen thousand, the five thousand for the sign-on bonus over three years, and then ten thousand for down payment assistance. I mean, this is what I would say to any officer out there that's looking to, to find a place, if we're competitive on COLA, and if we're competitive on pay. That for the bonus structure, that we incentivize them to stay here, because I know somebody might say, hey, listen, you know, living here, it's, it's kind of a double-edged sword, uh, you know, people will start harassing you because you live here. But I got to tell you, the best officers that I have, I should say this, the best relationships that I have with the PD in my time in Freeport are those that live here. And, um, you know, I don't know who's knocking on their door during their lunch hour, or locking on their door at night, or on the weekends.
A lot of people.
But I can tell you this, it's because of that, you are dearly appreciated in this community. And so, I have no reason to believe that that wouldn't also carry over. And so, I would be pushing that we have a stronger incentive to require those new hires with this incentive package, with a down payment assistance, so they live here. That they're required to live here, and at the end of three years, if they want to leave, they can leave. But it's going to be harder when they own the home, they live here, their children are going to our schools, and they're, they're a deep part of the fabric of our community. So, I wanted to make sure that in terms of incentivizing, that we have a full, full court press on that, number one. But also, in terms of pay, you know, there's, it's a give and take. The, the, the pay is competitive, but if we're going to increase pay for the police department. I want to make sure that the city is aware, and the residents are aware, that what I understand is that if we're going to make these raises for the police department, which I think are very necessary. That we got to look at cuts in other areas, because we can't just print money. We have a limited budget, and so, there's going to be some other tough decisions that we have as council in terms of those cuts, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
And, and I know, I don't remember HR, wait before you, y'all did a policy on some incentives for individuals living in the city, was that in twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah, it was nominal, it was like five hundred bucks.
Well, no, five hundred bucks was for a rental assistance, it was.
Can, can someone take her a mic, please?
The five hundred was for rental, the, I believe it was either twenty-five thousand, or twenty-five hundred, or it was for purchase.
Yeah.
And that was what was available in the budget at the time.
And that was in twenty-four, that we passed that, I believe so?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, again, save ourselves thirty thousand dollars, invest it, the fifth, half of it at least, so that we don't, we don't realize that loss. And, um, again, I can't think of a better way to, you know, improve the community with having officers that live here. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council, any other questions or comments? Well, I would like to say, um, it is a must that before next budget season, uh, we look at the matrix and get it right. Because I feel like that's the root of the evil, um, assuming the matrix is the, the right tool. Um, so, that's a must, we need, we need to get on that. Um, another thing I had was, on your overtime. You said thirteen point five holidays at the current hourly rate, and creates almost a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in overtime. This may be a question for HR, but can we just decrease the amount of holidays that we have in the city?
If you want to upset all the employees in the city, then.
Okay. A, a, HR said it's a no.
Yeah, I was about to say, you know, you're, you're just increasing the numbers in, but.
But, but I do want to note that the chief really came up, another great idea was, uh, increasing the comp time from fifty to a hundred hours. Uh, there, there, there's pros and cons to it, but ultimately, we do think it would dial back some of the overtime. And that's part of the reason why we were looking at funding, or I was looking at funding half of what was requested. To see if that combined with the, uh, higher comp time.
Because we were kept at twenty-four.
Yeah.
And just recently, it got, it got to forty, and so, I'm working on a, working on a policy and everything to bring to y'all, hopefully, for this upcoming month and everything.
Yeah, I, I've asked her to, to bring that policy to y'all since, uh, I, I, I'm not sure if council, like, formalized the policy last time, so I just thought, you know, y'all should vote on that. Uh, but ultimately, I think possibly that, and then you could take a look at it, you know, toward halfway into the budget year to see how it's going. But it does look like that potentially has the ability to cut some of the overtime down. I, you know, some, so I still think an increase is needed, but maybe not as much as what was asked for. But everything that, that has been asked, uh, or, or selected of those things, has been, you know, tentatively identified in yellow. And the funding is there within the budget, uh, of the things that we've talked about, so everything in yellow on the right.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And we'll, we'll do our best. Next, we have Fire and EMS.
Are we able to put our power lines up or not?
No.
They stayed this way, oh, okay, I was under the impression that we could, so. Mayor and Council? Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, Freeport Fire and EMS is here to present its twenty-five, twenty-six budget requests and considerations. Uh, starting into this was going over permitting, submitting our needed line items. Uh, first one off the bat is replacement tires on two fire engines at thirteen thousand. The other one is training overtime, we had it in last year's budget, or the budget before that, and it was moved from finance into regular overtime. Which last year's budget book, we were not provided a copy of that book before it was presented to you to understand what was going in, so there's several errors and questions that came out of that. But I'm asking for that to be reinstated. Also, keep in mind, one of my is a, uh, EMS revenue, so it generates that money for that anyway. So, just keep in mind, I'm asking for twelve thousand on the Avon tax side, the fire bu- uh, budget side. The other request I have is for three firefighter medics at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, that's one firefighter medic per shift. And if you were provided the sheets in the back on our explanation for that, you would see also, those position would also help generate revenue under the EMS, uh, fund and fire billing. Because then we'd be changing our response model from just reaction on ambulance only, or engine only, to an ambulance and engine responding to a car wreck, things like that. Uh, so, that's, that's addressing our response plan overall. The other thing I brought to attention is, uh, the due for the ambulance replacement, uh, and the engine replacement, those are two-year build factors. Uh, my recommendation, uh, in conversation with the city manager was, can we at least earmark two hundred thousand for the two-year build? So, that's not a, a four hundred thousand dollar increase for one purchase at that time. The last two ambulances that were bought by the city of Freeport were all under federal grant money from the COVID era, so, that helped us out quite a bit to relieve that replacement, two, two pieces of equipment there. The engine itself, uh, you look at that, it's one point seven million, that last price was July second at, at one, one point five, that is the price build of the truck. Um, two hundred thousand for loose equipment, but I'm asking that, uh, if it is available in the plan, to at least set some money aside, so I can discuss with our port partners, or industry partners, to see what they can pledge to that. I've had general conversation, but, uh, until I can really say, we've got something here, what can you add to, I need that support down the road. If it doesn't happen this year, I understand it, but I've got to put it before you to let you know I have a serious need, apparatus is twenty-three years old, putting money into it, has not passed the last two years of pump test. And eventually, it's going, if I have to send a truck to Houston for repair, I'm going to have a station without an engine, so. And that's when we're running to two, uh, two stations that time. The other thing I pointed down there on the, in your package, you'll see non-budget requests, and this came about as Chief Howell was talking about salaries and everything, but I'm just going to let you see this right here. Salary surveys were last done in February of twenty-twenty-one. We do not have input from directors on salaries. That's, that discussion goes on with city management, city management makes that decision with finance and all that present to you. Also, a way in there, I put in the slide is department directors' budget recommendations limited only to supplies, services, maintenance, sundry, and capital, that's it. So, some of our budget requests, you might see in our regular budget, might be a two percent, two and a half percent. Uh, so keep that in mind when we present budgets, that some of the salary issues, we're not able to address here locally. It has to be, it's always been addressed at the city manager level, or city administration level. Uh, accomplishments brought in, uh, communications, infrastructure improvement, we brought this through with several grants. Uh, we also entered a, in our local agreement with Port Freeport and City of Freeport on radio communications during emergencies. Um, we just finished up the FEMA training grant in vehicle rescue, rope rescue, confined space, and advanced EMT for at least one medic. Um, that was also hindered by our staffing issues, because we had to work around that level as well. Cost recovery services, EMS recovery revenue has seen a forty-two percent over the last three years, each year. Um, we're expected to forecast at nine hundred and twenty thousand this fall. So, our revenue has been going up, our call volume is going up, and the workload has been increased on staff, existing staff that we have, that's the reason why there's additional requests for staffing. The other thing I put in here, too, to help, uh, bring to light to you as well, increase the overtime budget to reflect the needs of the department. Usually, I throttle back and other things to soften it, uh, but the additional staffing during holidays, when they talk about thirteen holidays. We staff from the time it happens on Friday to the day the holiday's over with, because we see their traffic throughout, it's just not the holiday. And we staff up to six, so that we're able to handle the majority of the calls without mutu aid. Uh, so, I want to point that out, also listed in the holidays there, there are single days or holiday weekends for you. And, uh, this overtime does not reflect events, training, or backfield coverage. So, even as basic as fire EMS prevention, we have to watch how we do it, or when we can do it. Uh, most of our involvement has been in between calls, or interruption with calls, or had to bring staff in to address, uh, some of the requests. Uh, the other public events that we're involved with, River Fest, two paramedics, that puts a str- uh, a challenge for us as well for staffing that same weekend. Same time we're doing the cook-off, and our guys are out there volunteering their time for that cook-off. So, the next, uh, slide over, uh, is about employment, recruitment, and retention, I call it AKA attracting and keeping employees, let's keep it simple. Um, staffing levels for us currently shortage, we have three positions that are vacant, last year's staffing shortage, shortage was four positions. And periodically, we were up to five positions. And when I say that is, we're a staff of five in operations on shift, so somebody's having to work overtime consistently. Right now, it's forecast, right, we're now, we're seeing, we know movement's going on, and then, and the guys are open with us about it, and that's, and that's the way we expect it. Uh, we see, uh, two future turnovers, and they're waiting for retirements in other departments, so that's coming down the line, we know that's coming down. So, I want to give you heads up on that. Recruiting, surrounding the Fire and EMS recruitment channels were created, the salary range is out on the market in this area, anywhere from sixty-one to sixty-eight thousand, Freeport's been at fifty-five. And I want to give you some background on that as well, it's in my slide, too, background, twenty-nineteen merit-based raises were, were instituted, Fire and EMS was removed from matrix. Removed from matrix, so when I have an applicant come in, he, I can't tell him what he's going to make next year or the following year, because that matrix has been taken away. We presented our discussion back and forth, but city administration moved forward with that. Twenty-twenty, pay increase was not a, not COLA only, but performance rating, a COLA of one point five percent, and a merit of one point five percent. So, I, I borrow Chief Howell, uh, data, it's also in there, too, to show you what the COLA was for that year. What's saying it came to us, but that's how it was applied, was misrepresented to us when it was given to us, and then tried to deliver that to staff as well, is what happens. Twenty twenty-three, I came back for you in council, asked for an increase from forty-eight to fifty-five. It was granted. In twenty twenty-three again, firing this annual base at the time of that number was twelve percent below the market that we're competing with. I also have a copy tonight I will hand you as well. It is a copy of that memorandum and it is in very detail. It's about four pages long. Everything we've done, the history, everything there and what we've asked for backed in. But since then, there has not been an increase in that base pay when I recruit firefighter and EMS people. Uh recruitment and retention recommendation proposal. Based on Chief Howell's uh discussion and our discussion, I am supporter of the uh for all responders in the uh hiring incentive for first responder responders with the five thousand dollar total. With the payout as she stated earlier, I'm not going to bother you with that. Uh vacancies current, we have five fire, five positions uh that we're looking at addressing that with. And our s- our breakdown on retention, what it costs us to train employee is around thirty-four thousand. She had presented thirty thousand. So our numbers are almost parallel with the PD. She pointed out twenty-six over the last four years minus twenty-two. So we're fighting the same battle every day to find quality fir- uh first in what we hire. And trust me, it shows when you're not having to do investigations or follow up on complaints. I also agree to Ho Harley with the uh recommendation of supporting uh all first responders and academy reimbursement. Chief Howell's covered that expense with you as well, how to break it down. But also would like to let you know that when you hire a firefighter medic, you're hiring two state certifications, not one. You're hiring two, because in order for them to qualify on suppression side, they have to have the EMS. And EMS is eighty-five or ninety-five percent of our business. Um so I want to keep that in mind. That will come back uh that our guys have to qualify twice. Usually that's our delay in hiring because they're waiting for that testing to go around uh as far as those credentials matching up at state level. And uh we're looking at the same thing, requesting five incentives at that program as well. And we're looking at uh. Yeah. So in, in the last part of my uh presentation to you, staying within timeframe, fire EMS needs to be placed back on matrix. So it's clear direction to the employee where we're going on their, on their compensation. Uh benefits from that retain a highly skilled workforce. We've worked on education, training, rope rescue, the basis of, of, of other programs that they're needing to know. Uh but with this continual turnover, we're staying between a one and two-year employee. Uh we recruit, we recruit quality workforce to meet the citizens' needs and expectations. Uh that provides a better delivery in the field. And why? Our citizens' immediate, immediate needs are our priority in every call that we answer. And staff is key to efficient delivery of services for fire and EMS, because that's where the rubber meets the road at. Uh and once again, our elected officials, you've stressed, you've wanted and expected the best in what we do every day. So that's what we're, we're needing your, your help to pay attention to that and address that on salaries for personnel. Um any questions?
Counsel, you have any questions or comments for chief?
Yeah.
Going on with this tip. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
It just went blank, so I forgot.
Ten forty.
Oh, all right. Well, good afternoon, good evening, whatever, wherever we at. Thank you for your uh. We thank you for all that y'all do, you know, as a fire department. Here in Freeport. Uh could I, when in the radiance, um what, first of all, is this a, the our fire department, is this a hundred percent paid fire station?
It's pretty close. Um our, our volunteers that were senior are, are aging out. So.
So it's pretty much.
Yes.
For a part. Okay.
There is in the strategic plan to address recruiting and implementing volunteers, a reserve program. But it's been a challenge with the shortage that we've had with everything going on.
Okay, now, I mean, that's where I was getting at. Maybe uh the volunteer program covers, can cover some of the shortage. But um where, where is the closest hundred percent paid fire department in our area?
If you're saying a hundred percent.
Like us.
Will be uh like us, our population, our demographics.
No, I mean, just, just a fire station from, from here to where do you know of that's?
Fully paid and what you're saying is paralel.
To be paralel.
Some of the other agencies you're talking about are bringing day crew, which is Angleton. And they're putting them in during peak time for that, but they also have a separate EMS service that provides as well. So we're providing two services at the same time.
So it'd be safe to say our surrounding cities, Lay Jackson, Clue, Ridgewood, West Columbia. Uh just Sweeney, everybody is partially volunteer. Fire department or maybe fully volunteer.
They're all volunteer, I think, except, except the contracted EMS, right?
Okay.
Or there's an EMS tax base for that in that city budget or that EST.
Okay. So would it be hard, so we got four positions open? I mean. Bringing volunteer fire department to fill them four positions. And then so now you have a station that's partial.
I, I think, I think what you're saying is a supplement to the staff is the effective way. Um but uh when you look at the number of hours that's put into it to answer the call around the clock. And the participation is the question and has it, it's been slowly dwindling in different departments and it goes in cycles.
We were having the same problem in Pasadena, where they were actually getting ready to do like what Chris was talking about where the volunteer crews. Uh it was difficult to get them out during the daytime during Monday through Friday, because most of your volunteers have jobs. So now they're paying full-time, either a full-time crew or they're, they're contracting a full-time crew. To answer those calls uh during the daytime and then they flip back to their volunteer status at nighttime and on weekends.
Yeah. Well, they find a way to, you know, because I'm looking at, I'm, all the rest of the cities around us is straight volunteer. Freeport used to be a volunteer fire department too, so.
They call it a combination. We've, we've always had driver operators. And then when EMS came to challenge that point, that's where that came up, that certification, even on the fire service side, the certification process is lengthy as well. Paid or volunteer. There's the same curriculum. It's depend which agency you go through, state firemen, fire marshal association versus the fire commission. But I also give you a little insight too. I'm also an EST commissioner of EST number two. So I'm well aware of our West Brazos group, the challenges they face there and a lot of that is sometimes those guys are getting down to where they barely had five to assemble to answer a call. Um so there's, and then it goes back in a cycle. It may come back with newer generation, younger generation coming back in for it. So there's some, some of the challenges I'm exposed to as well.
Trying to be a hybrid with a full-time department is really challenging because you have the, the EMS side of it. Volunteers are generally, they can, they can fight a fire, you know, that certification, getting that is one thing, but trying to get them, you know, EMT or, or medic. Uh paramedic certified, it's a whole different.
Right.
Ballgame.
Yeah. Yeah, and I was just talking about the firefighters side, you know. I don't want volunteer and the, the, the medical side.
Understand.
I was just trying to see, I mean, how to help, you know, fill that spot when it's hard to get one and I know, you know, we got a lot of things going on and, and uh. I was just wondering if it could be done, you know.
Councilman Davis, it's in my strategic plan. It's, it's timing of getting there with the obstacles we've been in front of right now. So. It is in our, it is in our plan. We do recognize it. We do recognize the importance of it as well. Um but a hundred percent reliability, I can't guarantee. I can say, you know, after certain hours of the day, yes. The supplement would help, be greatly helped. I've looked at different systems. I've looked at A- Angleton. How do you uh co-mingle with uh versus responding straight to the scene versus you're in the station, so you have an actual response on the vehicle. Limit the exposure on the roadway, things like that. So uh and then they have to turn around and look at what is the incentives, because it's just not volunteering. They have pension programs out there that the volunteers are paid on the backside or stipends. So there's other funds that are created in that as well, so.
It depends, it depends on their job too. They have, we have too at our job. So our job let them leave. So now that would slow down the response time, but they get to leave the job because they're a volunteer fire department.
I know who the two, the two you're talking about. We've both been in the service a long time together.
Yeah, so, okay. But that's all I have. I just, I just was wanting, I ain't, I ain't trying.
Yeah. But it is, it is still in our plan to move forward in that direction. It's just our call volume is getting to a point. It's, we're seeing uh. It may not sound much to when I tell you, but since twenty-two, we've been jumping three hundred calls increase every year. And it's predominantly in medical. So if you look at an hour, hour and a half for the ambulance call. And then take another hour or so for report writing and then you start looking at that whole timeframe of employees on that. Give you example, after uh Hurricane Barrel, there's twenty-seven calls answered in twenty-four hours. That's a lot. Um even downtime during that time was not really afforded and we know that going into storm duty, that we're, we're addressing that. On a either full-scale launch on personnel and then the rest periods are definitely set for that, that, that time period. So I know they'll be down for a period of time to sleep and be able to answer the call shortly after that. So, thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Lieutenant Counsel, Mathemodus looks like he's in deep thought. Thank, thank you, chief.
You're welcome. Thanks, sir.
Councilman Pena? He's still in thought. We'll come back to him.
Um. Chief, thanks for everything you do. I know you're awesome. I know you're awesome at what you do. I really do. Um I, I think I've told you on a personal level, like I never hear anything about you. I never hear any complaints. And if I don't hear anything, I don't have to uh do anything. So you make my job as a councilman a lot easier. So for that, because of your expertise and your professionalism and how you do your job, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Um and that's, I'm being entirely sincere on that. Um I mean. Motley, we've never had a problem with you. And um never had a fi- problem with the fire department as far as I know, since I've been on council. And I always say it starts at the top.
We try to provide a. Safe house at the house itself.
Yeah.
That after they're off the call, they can relax and be themselves.
Yeah.
So when they go out on the streets, that's the only thing they need to worry about is answering the call.
Yeah. Well, I would say this, that it, you know, I don't go around having a lot of conversations with fire chiefs. But for the ones that I have and all the other municipalities that we, we have those monthly lunches and I speak with other councilmen from other cities. Um you're always in attendance, number one, but I could tell you, um I think we have the best fire chief in the county, quite frankly. So that's good stuff. Now, it's not a big setup, but you know, it's, I will say that we have some tough decisions to make and we're going to need your help. And in fact, we're going to need your expertise, your professionalism, your, I think you're a master of efficiency. And knowing how to make things work, especially in an emergency situation. You've been through all the hurricanes. I've seen you out there. I mean, we just had that tank, you know, those tanks over there, uh the welding tanks. You were right there. I saw you pull up. I waited at, I made the call into dispatch and you were, you and the other PD were there within less than two minutes. And um and then you still make all the uh, the other meetings throughout the county, so. I, I don't know, you know, how you do it, but you're, you're probably stretched thin.
Very thin.
Yeah.
My, my staff's the same way. So we're, we're feeling, we need to, I'll, I'll say this, if you look at my time card, my notes on there, I'm anywhere from a hundred and six to a hundred and twenty hours every two weeks.
I believe you. Almost as much as I spend on council. Just kidding. Uh but close. No, let me, let me say, you know, we have some tough choices ahead of us because again, that we have a tight budget. So we're going to need your help on this and I, and I think that um. You know, when we talk about first responders. I hear all the complaints from the residents. And to bring those forward here in front of everybody and cameras and everything else, it's not easy. Why? Because you never want to be the one criticizing um or for that matter, bringing the, the heavy about the accounting for these departments. But there's, those are realities, right? So we only have a finite budget. So I think you've always been um able and very creative to how to um help us save money. Your department has always found grants, which I'm like, man, that's awesome. So I'm hoping we can find grants for a lot of the stuff we're looking at. And I'll add that to my list here um of solutions. But. You know, you said, hey. We're talking about vacancies and the number of calls that we have. And I think about the, the EMS, the three hundred additional calls that you were saying um that we have.
That's based on the annual totals now. I haven't broken down in between, but just gave you annual highlights of the, the discussion.
And I want to make sure that I, that I understand this correctly, so that maybe as a council, we can have some, some guidance on this and I, you know, um. Cause I'm not sure that we really talk enough about the fire and EMS and how we're really going to do it. Because to me, you have the fire department and I think uh Councilman Davis um just remarked and it was kind of a chuckle here on council to say. We don't want volunteer EMTs. That just seems kind of crazy and dangerous. Unless, of course, they're certified nurses and whatnot. And I'm, I'm wondering if other cities that have volunteers that are EMTs, they're probably licensed.
Actually, that's been posted since Chief Davis left.
Is that right?
To recruit that and there has been no action on that.
For the EMT side.
EMT side.
Yeah. So that, that I get.
Where, where you're at right now, Councilman, is people can go to school, do things online and they go look for that job instead of volunteering anymore. That's the root challenge.
Yeah.
That's the root challenge. Unless, I, I'll say this, some of those folks you talk about, Councilman Jarvis, is that uh some of those guys that volunteer, they were raised that a way. They're raised in families that, that a way or that's what we did as we were growing up, because that was our involvement in our community and we leave that away. So it's a little bit different in how to recruit some of the newer folks coming in. Some, some of the smaller departments are thriving because that's, that's what they have to bring them together. So that's kind of where it's at on that one.
Well, to, and thank you for that. I um. I, I really want to lean on how, how effective you've been and it really going to bring a challenge to you as the chief. Because I actually think you can do it. I wouldn't ask if I didn't think you could do it. I'd be having a different conversation about just cuts. But I actually think that Chief Motley's up to the task. You know, let me ask you this. If you were forced to, to lead a a hundred percent volunteer reserve fire department, do you think you could do it effectively? Like the other cities do, like the other chiefs do?
I believe so. I'm also the president of the Zorgani Firefighter Association as well.
Right at the top. So if you could do it at a hundred percent volunteer reserve. It's safe to say you could do it if there's a, there's a, a hybrid where you have some of the EMTs that are also full-time or entirely full-time. But that you could, you could easily manage a, a hybrid fire department. Is that fair to say? I mean, if you could do it all reserved, you could do it a lot easier with a handful of uh full-time EMTs. So I think that goes without saying. Where I'm going with this is that I'm trying to figure out where we are now and where we got to be, which, which is a hybrid. And what that number is as a percentage of where we are staffing-wise. I don't know where the city, other cities are at, but I can't imagine that it's more than twenty percent where the budget is full-time. Just spitballing. If the number's higher, that's fine. If it's forty percent, let's get to forty percent. If that's the average in the county, let's go to the, let's go with the average. Maybe we stay a little bit above the average, but we have some other reasons, what, some other things that we do to solve this problem. And I'm trying to think, not necessarily outside the box, because I think we spitball a lot of this stuff before. But I, I want us to make sure that we have a real serious conversation about this. And this is the first year I think that we're actually doing it. So thank you, Jerry. We're actually doing it right. Just like the last meeting, we had some really good conversations on the water and we got that really good feedback tonight. So for the public out there, this is the best budget year I've been a part of in the five years that I've been on council. Five and a half years. So I want to ask, you know, how do we solve this problem, right? I want to have that conversation. And I think I have. And I think I have a couple of ideas that you've already touched on, that Councilman Davis has touched on, and I've gotten feedback from other residents that were on the volunteer side and other residents that are also, uh, uh, councilmen on the, in other cities. And I, and I'm thinking about the hybrid, where we gotta go, what that percentage is. And I'd like that number. If you could help to find what that average is for the county, for that matter, even for our little Brazosport Metroplex, what that average is between Clute, uh, Richwood, Lake Jackson, Jones Creek, and Angleton, and all the other, you know, thirty-mile radius fire departments. Because I'd like us to go there. I don't want to just throw out an arbitrary number like, well, I want zero percent or ten percent. I want to, I want to know where the average is, right? So then we have metrics. You can only, you can only manage.
Let me understand when you're saying average, what are you comparing average? Staffing, volunteer, career?
Um, let's say as far as the, uh, the paid, like, total payment, I guess, uh, I mean, I don't know. Maybe we talk about it as a percentage of the number, total number of staff, or do we talk about it as a percentage of salaries? One or both? Either or? Um, I think the answer's between those two. And we can look at both of those metrics so that we are above the average on both. But what, what I do believe is that we've had these conversations, or didn't have these conversations for the last five years, because, you know, they were not, either not brought up, people are too nervous to talk about it, or we just never, we're given an opportunity to speak about it. But I want to make sure that, you know, this, this year, we talk about these things in a, in a very serious manner. And I'm glad that you brought up the hybrid conversation. And I'm glad that Mr. Pennington also brought up, um, hybrids, because you're bringing that, that background and that expertise to the conversation, and I don't think we've ever had that. The only time I've ever heard about, um, you know, hybrids and ESDs was other people's, other, other municipalities and other chiefs and other fire department officials. So I want to also talk about ESDs, you know, um, and I also want to talk about how we use the industry in terms of the port and all the other plants, and making sure that they help to pay their fair share, because it's my understanding that when the Freeport LNG blew up a couple of years ago, Freeport's fire department was right there at the ready. And we spent a good amount of time there, and they probably saved tens of millions of dollars, if not more, maybe hundreds. And I know they probably have some lawsuits that they're gonna end up being liable for. And so I'm thinking, man, if they were losing ten to twenty million dollars, but they could have lost more, but because we helped to save them, don't they, don't, doesn't it make sense that we get maybe them paying for our fire engine, for our ambulances? And so those are the things I'm thinking about.
That's where I was talking about commitment from the city on what portion, so that we can have those conversations. I can have verbal conversations along, which I have had, but I need something to show a little proof.
Well, so then I, I saw that you said, hey, we have, you, you mentioned a minute ago with Councilman Davis that you, there's a plan in place in that, in that direction, but there's been one reason or another that's, that's prevented any meaningful progress to actually happen. And so why my two questions are, what are the actionables that we can actually move on? So that we are in fact moving toward the direction of a hybrid fire department. So I guess the first part would be, let's get those metrics. And then secondly would be, okay, let's find out what those steps are to get there.
I guess the first thing right now, my biggest challenge is filling the vacancy of the fire marshal.
Yeah.
Filling the vacancy and making sure where our building and code, or, I'm sorry, the two phrases go together all the time. Building official. You saw me out there with the building inspector that day on your property.
Right.
Uh, providing education on s- s- city managers as to what we can do, can't do. The question came up, providing feedback on that. So my whole, half of my week sometimes is spent towards answering those questions. So there are things that are ahead of me that I can't get my full attention on because we're dealing with the question coming in the door or the vacancy that's going on.
Right.
So as far as hybrid, I've done the research. It's a matter of sitting down and getting into it and pulling it out and writing a policy, because we're not gonna add anybody until we get policy lined out, because that is hard to manage at that point. You start off on the right foot, the next step would be the same going forward.
But you're, you're the president of the Fire Department Association for Presoria County, you said?
Yes, this year.
This year. So that tells me everybody recognizes that you know what's up in all of the departments. And that they would probably say, you know what, if we had a question for our departments, Motley's the guy, and that's what I believe. Like, you're the top guy. Everybody says, you're the subject matter expert. And that's great. So that said, I really have a, a true sense of confidence that if there was anybody that, any, that we, we had anybody else doing this, they would call you to say, hey, how do we go about doing this? And I think you're the guy. I really do. So I'm glad you're here with us.
I'm, I'm not, uh, Mr. Pennington's called me many times when he's been at his other city on questions in my realm, and we've had executive level conversations on what impacts or what laws, things like that, and because they were planning some things as well, what did they need to be looking at?
Yeah. Well, I would love for there to be some actionables on how we can actually move in that direction. Even, um, you know, bureaucratically, whatever the paperwork is, whatever ordinance is that legal has to draft up, whatever, uh, council should decide, hey, yeah, this is, let's do this so that we get this going. So then now we separate, okay, what do we need this year, but where are we going from here? And for the big-ticket items, we really gotta have part of our actions. You said you gotta have some, some meat and potatoes paperwork to take to these industry, these, that definitely have the money. And we can have them to help. And that's, that's what I think would be helpful, mayors, that we do ask industry to help us once and for all.
Absolutely. And Chief has been, um, talking about that.
Yeah.
That exact item for, for quite some time.
Yeah. Well, I want to do everything that we can to help him to get that moving so we can have those conversations. So, I mean, I can't be everywhere, you know. Chief puts in a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty hours a, a week, but between the five of us, we can meet with the industry leaders. I mean, I think both, uh, Councilman Davis and, uh, Councilman Rosso at the county level and have a lot of folks that they know. So if those conversations are had at the county level with all these other industry leaders, I think those, these two guys would be there, including yourself, Mayor. But, uh, I, I don't want to interject myself on it. I'd just rather, if these guys have the relationships, if these guys have the knowledge on how this stuff works, let's, let's put it to it. It's the same thing when we're having IT conversations and we have Councilman Matt The Morris giving his IT input. I, I'd like these guys to get it. But certainly, it's, it's time we, uh, we get off the pot and start moving on this. Because, um, otherwise we're stuck with two million dollar budget asks, which in this year, when we're so tight, it, it becomes really, really sticky. I figured, well, it's, it's great, though, that we have actual options. And the, the last thing I had was the grants, and I think somebody was asked, Councilman Davis was asking for a grant writer, but between Mr. Fernandez and the police department, and, uh, shoot, I forget who's doing your grants. Is it you that does all the grant research yourself?
I do the research, but I have a, I have a grant writer that is very reasonable.
Okay.
I'm talking about a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
But I'm in the end proofing or pulling the data so they pull the buzzwords together.
I think the last fire engine, you helped to put some grants together to help supplement the cost, right?
Repeat that question?
Didn't you pull a grant a couple, within the last two or three years to help supplement the cost of one of the fire engines? I thought I remember seeing that.
Fire engine was, uh, nine oh two, I believe, and that was almost fifteen years ago on that one.
Well, that was.
Oh, no, I did, okay, recently with the forestry service, but that has been slow because there's only so much money to pot, and how you're scored on wild land. But I had to turn that grant back in because I could not get it funded. But the economy had turned down, and that's just part of what goes on.
Yeah. No further questions, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions or comments for Chief? Chief, are you asking for six personnel? Three firefighters slash medics and then three EMS?
No, I, I backed off of that. That was originally in there. The reason why the firefighter medic is because the cross train, what they can do, and how it impacts fire and EMS billing. Um, just asking for just the three, only firefighter medic. That's it. Originally, that was in there. It was re-situated as the very last one, but, um, not interested in the EMS personnel at this time.
Okay.
Our, our, we have to be, keep a balance. If we get too heavy on EMS, we're gonna be pro EMS, but if we're not, if we're, we stay balanced with fire and EMS, then we stay balanced in our mission.
Okay.
Because specialties, things like that, the preferences of the employee, things like that.
Okay. And then your ambulance is four hundred thousand dollars one time?
One time.
Okay.
And we're just asking that, uh, when I talked to Mr. Pennington, could you at least save half? So that way it's a two-year build on the truck. Um, now that takes into account that, um, stretchers, things like that, that need to be bought inside that are also costly as well.
Okay. And, uh, four thousand is reoccurring? Because it's reversed, because I was gonna say if the ambulance is four thousand, I write you a check right now.
Ma- ma- maintenance, maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so it's maintenance, okay.
And then you'll see on there, the billable revenue estimated generated a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the two fifty-eight. And what that was taking that number off was seeing how many air ambulances we fly out, and then took thirty percent collection rate off that potential number.
Okay.
Um, and still was very conservative in that number of using thirty percent versus we're seeing forty-two percent today. So stay conservative.
And then, uh, just twelve, twelve thousand for training overtime is what you're requesting?
Yes, I have two budgets. One is Avroam tax, the other one is from EMS revenue. And, uh, it was in there originally, but it was moved into overtime. So we're generating the funds for that twelve thousand EMS account, and then the Avroam tax will be on the twelve thousand on the other side. So I had to show twelve and twelve, and that's twenty-four in total.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Rosso, you got anything?
I got one last question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I know that, uh, Chief, that, uh, when the police department was at, was talking about the, uh, there was a line item for the training for the reserve, police officers that volunteer, the citizens, police.
The citizens' police academy.
Yeah, the police academy, the citizen police academy. Um, what was that budget line item amount for that? Was it like twelve thousand? What was that on there?
I'm not certain.
Do we know off the top of our head what that was? The, uh, the citizens' police academy, what the budgeted item was on that for, uh, the Freeport. I think it was for overtime, was it? What was that?
Uh, she, she was explaining her total overtime and how that was one.
Yeah, I think it was something like.
Component of.
It was one of the components, but she didn't have a number on it.
Uh.
I don't think so.
I don't know if she had a number on just that. She just put it in with the extra events that they had done and things.
Well, I just, you know, while we're having this conversation, it just occurred to me, like, if we're talking about having that police academy for the citizens on the police side, maybe we can have that same kind of academy volunteer effort for po- potential candidates to want to be volunteers for the fire department. You know, my, my term on city council ends in May of twenty-six. If that's, if that's there, I'll sign up. I'm happy to help. I'll just put that out there now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so if we can have that here for the next, for the final review to include that in the budget, I'd appreciate it. That line item, what that would cost. Thank you.
I got one more.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's not really a question. I just want to make sure, uh, see, he writing something down?
I'm listening, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, on my comment, I wasn't, uh, asking for no firefighters to get cut or nothing, you know. I was talking about the, the.
Understand.
The new people. I mean, you know, adding in, you know, when we add in, I just wanted to make sure that nobody think that I was, I was trying to cut the staff down. No, if we were adding any, I was trying to figure out a way how can we put in, uh, uh.
Additional, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I would.
I took it as that.
Okay, okay.
I took it as that, otherwise I would have a rebuttal for you.
Okay, okay.
But you, you're, you're well received in what your direction is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Chief, thank you for everything that you do.
Thanks, sir.
And, um, we'll do what we can.
Right. So, uh, I will pass out a packet. This is the cover letter that most of you saw when we first met, when, two at a time, with, like, uh, with y'all, with staff. And then behind it is the twenty thirteen memorandum that I presented on our pay raise. And if you'll look on the very back, everything in my presentation was built off this twenty twenty-three memorandum because it hasn't changed. So I just want to share that with you so you have a chance to view it on your own. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Rudy, you're next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
Not much has changed with mine since last we've talked. Um, I still have the same items on here for streets, uh, concrete saw, one-time expense of six thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars, a vibratory plate compactor of one thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars, um, a jumping jack of two thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, a fifteen-foot batwing mower, which is twenty-nine thousand dollars, and a zero-turn mower for fourteen thousand dollars. Um, the first three on this list are, are replacements. The ones we currently have no longer work, and it's gonna take up almost as much to fix them as it does to buy them new. Um, I believe one of them there is probably about fifteen years old on one of our compactors. Um, it's been through its life cycle. Um, the fifteen batwing, fifteen-foot batwing mower, it gets used all the time doing all of our ditch mowing and stuff like that, as well as our side boom mower. But the, uh, the current batwing we have is kind of heavy for the tractor from what the operator's been telling me. And that he can get one in there, the one we have priced here, um, it's a little bit more a lighter machine that he can get down in the ditches and, and maneuver it a lot better. And then the zero-turn mower is because if y'all seen Eddie out there mowing these lots and stuff, this is done by the streets department, not the parks department, and Eddie's always mowing all these lots that the city has, and he needs an updated mower. It's one of those things that, one of those items we keep having to replace over the years. I'm sorry. I better ask y'all if I have any questions on this budget first, huh?
Counsel, you got any questions? Dang, minute forty-five seconds.
I'm trying to get y'all out of here.
Hey, man, brother. Glad someone is.
All right.
Um, hold on, hold on.
Yes, sir.
Um, any questions, Counsel?
Those are all new equipment?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's actually maybe replacement equipment with equipment we already have.
But now I'm talking about brand new?
Yes, sir.
The batwing is gonna help mow the ditches.
Yes, sir. We currently have one. Uh, we've replaced two of the, um, uh, gearboxes on it, and, uh, third one's gonna be timed to do probably if we get a whole lot more mowing.
Okay, because that is, um.
It's one of the machines that.
That's a sore topic right now, is, is the ditches.
That one will still be able to be used. I mean, even though on the new one, I mean, you can still.
Yes, it's still currently operating.
Yeah.
It's still currently operating, but it's gonna be at a, you know, maintenance fees on that's gonna start eating this up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I spent right about five thousand on it last summer. Or, uh, in this budget cycle, I've spent five thousand dollars just in replacement cost.
Might be time to go to the auction with it. Counselman?
Um, how soon would, with the, with, if the budget's approved for all of these, which I don't see any problems with it for the streets, the, on the batwing, how soon would that be put into operation?
Uh, I mean, as soon as I can get it. I'm pretty sure that the manufacturer or the, um, the company, uh, I'm trying to remember the John Deere company here, uh, use them all the time. It's the one I came with with zero turn. They probably have one sitting on site.
Counsel, anything else? All right, let's go to the parks department.
All right, um, in parks department, this is a little bit bigger ask, and, uh, I completely understand um, that we only have a certain amount of limited money to go around, but this first ask is the exterior medic, metal coating on the outside of the, of River Place. It's starting to get rusted up pretty good. We can, you could probably paint it and get it by for a little bit, but I really think it's, you're gonna need to replace it. The screws are starting to get rusted out on the metal that's there, and it's, and it's time for replacement. So we've got this down as a one-time expense for about thirty thousand dollars. Um, next, we got, uh, repair on the playground equipment for twenty thousand. That's some of these older parks that have these broken slides, these, uh, outdated stuff that's just been dilapidated over the years that hadn't really been taken care of. And we've got new parks in other places. We need to bring up the other parks that are, that are worn down and just bring them up and update them a little bit. Which rolls right into the next one with borders and mulch. Uh, it's ten thousand dollars, and that's what actually, instead of having the wood around these, they would have the actual plastic on the newer playgrounds that you've seen, the borders around them, they would actually match those. That's what that's for. Any questions on these?
Minute and a half. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No. Well, I mean, uh, it's just a coincidence, but I was. Well, I mean, uh, just a coincidence, but I was walking around the River Place the other day. Just, I was looking at the, the, the flower beds and stuff, just the way it looked it around now. Uh, trying to figure out how, how we can upgrade that. But in doing that, I was looking at the, at the actual metal and, and stuff that you were talking about. And I was like, dang, that stuff look bad, that's.
Looks great from a distance, doesn't it?
Yeah, so, I mean, uh, no, that, that does need some attention. And I think, you, I mean, we, we have to talk about it on the budget, but, I mean, the River Place, it don't just sit there. It does bring in money.
It does have some evidence.
It's always constantly rented out and rented out. So, that's not something that's just, I mean, just sitting out. It, it brings in money. Uh, but I, I seen that and I was like, man, this ain't, this, this needs to be some, it needs to be some attention to this.
Yes, sir.
So, but who, you, you still got some other stuff going? Who does the, uh, who's in charge of doing the, the?
Landscape?
The beautification, the, the landscaping?
John Perez is my park superintendent and he does a lot of that, um.
So, he ain't, he don't got nothing in here asked for that to pertain to that? Is, did that go through you, your budget?
Yes, sir, it would and, and majority of that, he's got, in the parks budget, we already have botanical money set aside for flowers and stuff like that, as far as the flower beds. Um, there is some money in there and that's what we choose to use with it. It wouldn't be a capital project such as this.
Yeah, oh, okay. But we need a, a bigger, a bigger project. I mean, like, somebody else to come in here and set it off. 'Cause I see we putting flowers, but they just getting fried. So, they not the right type of flowers. But, all right.
Uh, some of them got stole too.
Yeah, oh, yes. But we, I believe there's been four or five police reports on stolen flowers out of flower beds, out of F and P flower beds all around here.
It, it, it's crazy. Councilman Pena?
Um, thanks again for staying here, uh, so late and going through these numbers with us here. Um, on the River Place, it's a thirty thousand dollar one-time expense on the exterior metal coating here. And I guess that's to protect it from all the rust.
Yes, sir.
Um, I remember having a conversation with residents here that, what, there was like a Bellagio kind of fountain system right there at the base of the harbor, at the, the edge of the harbor, where there was fountains there. And that, that, I understand that the infrastructure's still there, but they turned them off because the, the spray from the saltwater from the harbor was negatively affecting the River Place.
Okay.
And, um, I said, well, why don't we just paint it again? I'm glad it's on the budget finally. But I'm hoping that we could also then get those fountains back up. And what would that entail?
You know, until about three weeks ago, I didn't know those fountains existed. Um, and I was asked a question from GLO. I believe it was a grant project from GLO on that. And I haven't completely got into it to tell you if the infrastructure's even there. I have not personally seen any of the infrastructure there. Um, there might be some electrical pedestals out there by the dock that I've seen. And I always wondered what they went to. That may partially be part of that. But as far as the pumps and stuff, I couldn't honestly answer that question for you.
Well, I'm, I'm curious if, um, you know, if it's not through this budget, it's probably on the budget for the beautification, uh, board. And, um, if that money can't be used to help make sure that those fountains are working just as much as we're working on the entrance. And certainly on the beautification. It makes me think, all right, where's the money? Where's the money? And I'm trying to remember, and this is a question probably for, uh, for legal, because I know, uh, Mr. Duncan was involved originally or part of that original, uh, TERS. Does the map of the TERS include River Place?
I don't think so. I, I, when I, I've only looked at the map once, but my understanding is it's on the other side of the river. It goes down second and then kind of sweeps out and catches, uh, downtown.
I thought he captured part of Avenue A and, and, and I think they included that. Am I, am I mistaken? Do we have that map? Anyway, if, if it's there for the TERS money, certainly we can use that. And, you know, just put some cameras up, making sure we find out who these perpetrators stealing flowers are. Uh, maybe we just put up more cacti.
Right.
Right? No, but, um, in, in all seriousness, I know, I, I would like to see if we can get what that number is for those fountains. Because whether it's in our budget for this year and then we help to direct the beautification board to get those up and running. Or if then, if we have the option to either use TERS money or the EDC to contribute at that. 'Cause I think they're contributing to the entrance, is that right?
I believe there's, there's something that.
Yeah.
It's not the TERS, the EDC is gonna be paid for the entrance.
Correct, but I'm wondering if between these three pools of money, the beautification board, the TERS money, the EDC money.
The beautification board, that probably comes out of the park and rec budget. It's all one budget.
Yeah, I'd like to definitely see what that number would be to get those up and running. Um, because it's just a, a nice, why isn't this working? Kind of deal. Um, and the playground, I thought we just replaced the equipment on all the pa, the playgrounds, peppermint park.
There was new equipment per, there was new equipment for three different, three new playgrounds. But some of the older playgrounds, like here at F and P, um, the, the T docks down there on the river, those are older playgrounds that didn't get the new stuff.
Those are. Does this also include any of the equipment that was for the, the swimming pool?
No, sir, that's coming in my, into the, my next budget.
All right. And then you said the border, bolt, excuse me, border and mulch, I'm getting tired. The playgrounds, is that that rubber stuff that they put on running tracks?
It's not a rubber mulch, it's a regular mulch, but it's the, uh, plastic borders around it rather than the wooden borders that you currently see at some of these playgrounds.
Oh, I, I remember having a conversation with the, uh, the director over there earlier in the summer when we were, when the swimming pool was still closed down. And, and the, and the conversation was, instead of having that wood mulch that blows away on, when it's always windy, that we would just have something that was glued down. And I see a lot of those parks that have that rubber. And if that, those beds could be done the same way, I don't know.
So, it does look like on the map that the TERS has that side, goes down, looks like, uh, Front Street.
Yeah.
And then jumps kind of across the river and then stays down there. So, it does look like it encompasses it.
Yeah. So, put some of that TERS money to work. Council can decide that. That's good. I don't, no further questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Well, he's gonna move on once we tell him to.
He's got the rec center next.
George, you have anything to add?
I do. Um, and it's just for the exterior metal coating. Are we in danger of losing, um, insurance coverage if we do not replace this?
That question I do not know. Um, it's now been brought to my attention, this was actually something Mr. Petty had put into this budget. Uh, whenever I, I got to look at it, I thought it was one of the things that we needed to keep, but I cannot honestly answer that question about the insurance.
That's it? Yes, sir.
Hey, Rudy, who, who's responsible for the, uh, pavilion?
The pavilion, uh, parks, public works is.
Parks Department?
Yes, sir.
Have you looked, you've, I know you've looked at it, right? You see how bad a shape it's in?
Yes, sir, underneath it there.
Really, really bad shape. When it rains, it pours.
Yeah, it's, it's where those, uh, drains come in the middle, where it's got the offset. Uh, I've, I've half seen those right there on the edges.
Yeah, somebody need to address that.
Yes, sir.
I have one other question, actually two. Does this, the, does the River Place exterior metal coating apply to the pavilion too?
No, sir, that wouldn't apply to.
Oh, wow.
For, for the pavilion.
I thought we did some pavilion work last year.
Yes, sir. Uh, from Hurricane Barrel, um, the pavilion that was behind the kitchen was all, it's all rebuilt.
Okay, but not the main pavilion?
No, sir.
Yeah, we definitely need to look at that. Can we get a line item for that, what that's gonna be, so that we can try to maybe include that in this budget?
I'll look into it, yes, sir.
Number one. And then, uh, what's the total staff on the parks department?
Um, you would have to ask me that today because I just got notices of two of them. The one's exited Friday and one exited today. So, let's see, there's those two. Whenever you ask parks, do you want everybody, including facility maintenance? 'Cause those are all included in one department. You have parks and facility maintenance. And there's, uh, three ladies that take care of the facility maintenance. And there is, I believe, five employees in parks and a supervisor, so six.
I'm more concerned.
Total, nine people total.
Nine people total? And of those nine people, who handles grounds, like the flower beds and whatnot?
Um, there is a combined effort from all of those.
So, nine folks?
Yeah, it's combined effort.
Got it.
Throughout all the parks and everything.
Playground equipment, is that for this?
That's also them too.
Okay.
No further questions, Mayor. Thank you.
I've got nine employees in parks to do all the mowing, flower beds, uh, any of the, the parks that need to be updated. They also do a lot of the beach work in the mornings. Whenever they come through, they do beach duties. Um, that, that crew does a lot of work.
My mom. So, on the pavilion, uh, you s, I, we had, uh, rented the pavilion and it stormed and I took some pictures. And so, it's got to need some maintenance. I mean, I have the pictures right here, I'll show you. And it's flood, it floods the pavilion 'cause of all of this water that's coming down.
Yeah, it hits the concrete instead of hitting the drains. It's, it's coming down out of the broken, uh, the, where the, I don't know how they designed that, but it's got a V in the middle. And it's supposed to run the water all the way out. And it's a bad design. We do need to take care of it.
Yeah, it's bad. I got, I got the pictures right here. I took pictures of it. I didn't know what was, what was going on, but, all right, you can move on. I'll show you though.
Thank you, sir.
How about the rec center?
Rec center. All right, I know, gentlemen, there's been a lot of discussion on this. I hope I've came back with what, what you, we've asked for. Um, I have in here an annual pool contract, which is ten thousand dollars reoccurring. I actually think we're gonna be able to cut that cost a little bit, um, with what we need. Um, we've reached out and we've got some bids back on that, but I'm still waiting to make sure that the bid's gonna cover everything we need. So, as of right now, I've still got it at ten thousand dollars. Uh, splash pad replacement, this was just a, a ballpark figure from the, the, uh, crew we got that come out and look at it. And it was ten thousand dollars one time. But that's also gonna, it will include the, uh, water treatment in order to make sure, because that's gonna have to be recirculated water and not new water. That will, uh, keep up with treatment of that and make sure it's, it's safe. Um, 'cause that's how you get one of those bacteria in there that can be really harmful. Also, the rec center exterior met, metal coating, which would be about the same as what we were looking at at River Place. Um, the rec center, I, it needs some attention. We've actually done some soft wash to it. Um, Bella down there has contacted the company and they came in and they did some pressure washing. They've actually cleaned it up quite a bit. We could probably, if you have to cut something, this might be something you look at cutting. Uh, because it, it is looking more and more presentable from the outside, but there's still some issues with the metal coating on the outside.
And the splash pad replacement, you're talking about the mushroom?
Yes, sir.
You gonna go back like for like, or you gonna put something different in there?
I wanna see how, uh, what good options we have.
There you go. There you go.
That's a good response for I have no clue, Mayor.
Yeah.
I wanna see what options we can get.
Yeah.
Council, any, any questions or comments on the rec center?
Yeah, yeah, actually, uh, number one, I would say that, that, that response, he, he, uh, is, is a response that somebody that has children excited for them. So, um, good stuff. Now, and the replacement cost for that splash pad is ten thousand one time. Is, is that a, a good number to, to lean on for an estimate for new splash passion, excuse me, new splash pads? If we wanted to put one in Ward C and D?
I think that's using some of the equipment we currently have with what the estimate we've gotten from.
And it also, it's where it would be going in at. It's all tightly dependent upon the infrastructure that's there. You know, if you gotta run wiring, if you gotta run power, if you gotta run drainage, uh, those, that, that impacts the price considerably.
Got it.
Might just have to put a new mushroom.
Well, you can repop a few things hopefully.
Thank you, no further.
All right.
Go ahead, Council.
All right, uh, yeah, the splash pad, so you say we can try to, I mean, we may be able to reconstruct some money with this exterior metal. Uh, I don't see the slide on now. Uh, as you, as you bought a slide too.
Well, I'm hoping to get that all done with the splash pad replacement, to be honest with you. I'm hoping we can get it all knocked out with, with one, with one.
You be looking at that too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the annual pool contract, what's?
Okay, so currently we have, um, our ladies, our people down at the rec center are, um, I'm trying to remember, CPOs, they're certified pool operators. Now, they can test the chlorine in the water and they can only test a certain amount of things. But when it comes to the pumps and the other things that are, are there that need attention.
Yeah.
Um, which is some of the issues we've ran into this year. I don't wanna have these issues again. I wanna have somebody that can come out and give me the knowledge that they have at a competitive price and tell me what I, we need to do to make sure we can keep up and running.
Yeah.
I'll be shut down.
And keep it running.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one, one of the things that Rudy came up with, he, he and his ladies are meeting with pool company Landmark. I think it's this week or next week.
I believe it's this week.
This week. Where, uh, uh, there's some other stuff out there that we're trying to use some budget money that we have this year, this current year, uh, before the end, uh, of the fiscal year to get it, uh, replastered and some other issues out there uh, that's causing some of the maintenance problems they're having. The coronation, uh, equipment that's out there is very old, it needs replastering. That was, I first quoted on that's about ninety-five thousand dollars. So, it needs quite a bit of work. The coronation equipment was causing some of the issues that they were having, as well as, again, the plaster and some of the other issues out there. So, we should have a handle on it. And we're gonna probably bring it to y'all with a, a proposal before the budget year ends.
Okay, so, uh, remember in that pump room we went in?
Yes, sir.
With that big old pump?
Yes, sir.
Is that, that's one of the things.
That's one of the things we're looking at with Landmark to maybe get it completed with this year's budget.
Okay.
That's one of the things we're looking at.
All right. Thank you.
Council, anything on this side? Thank you, Rudy.
Gentlemen, y'all have a good night.
Don't let the door hit you.
So, I am covering Wade's stuff. He went on vacation this week. Uh, the first couple of items, he was looking at, um, staff raises for his personnel as well as himself. What they asked for was about ten thousand dollars on his, uh, salary. Uh, he currently makes fifty-five. The Lake Jackson, he looked at some of the staff at some of the other museums. Lake Jackson, for example, was at sixty-five. He did the same thing with his other two personnel. He was just trying to get, I think, a dollar or two for one of them and maybe three or four dollars an hour for the other one. Uh, those requests were, uh, dropped down. Uh, they, they don't show it on here, but I think we gave about sixty percent, uh, of those, uh, requests. Uh, the next thing wa, I'm sorry, did, did it show it on there? I was looking at the wrong line. Uh, the next thing was the museum generator. Uh, one of the things that happened during Barrel, when Barrel went out, is that he was up there, um, something like six days running fans and dehumidifiers so that the, uh, facilities artifacts wouldn't be run. Lake Jackson was not as fortunate and they lost about a hundred thousand dollars worth of artifacts because humidity ruined them. The job that, uh, if you've been up to the museum recently, as opposed to what it had looked like before, it was kind of a collection, hodgepodge. Wade and his staff had done an incredible job with the display cabinets, with timelines, rotating exhibits out. I mean, uh, the shark exhibit and all that collectively was, has driven up, like I said, a fifty percent increase in the number of visitors this year, only through, you know, the end of July compared to all of last year. So, he, he, he made double, uh, the visitors he had last year. And then the last thing on there was a, uh, a dehumidifier. So, if they do get another power outage out there and the generator does or doesn't work, he would be able to run that and keep, again, the, the artifacts and things like that from ruining. Uh, we've got quite a bit up there and it doesn't take mu, much, uh, humidity or moisture to run those items. He had a few other things on the, on the list, but those, just those four items is what we looked at approving, uh, for this budget, which was those partial of those staff raises, the generator and the dehumidifier. We had, uh, electrician come out, uh, the same one that came. We had, uh, electrician come out, uh, the same one that came out and looked at, uh, one of the projects that, uh, Mr. Matt Morris had asked about, about the generator, and so they looked at three different locations. And we're trying to repurpose the generator, I think it was at the ball fields, that we can repurpose to one of those locations. So trying to save some money there. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions anybody might have on that.
Counsel, any questions or comments for the museum?
Yeah, I, um, I'd like to see the comparison, I mean, I know we're looking at a couple of comparisons with the, the neighboring museums, but I know that they run a, a larger museum in terms of visitorship and for that matter, um, showcases and, and traveling exhibits. Number one, but, um, I'm just trying to figure out overall the, the true comparison in numbers and visitorship and, and whatnot. And I don't see those metrics on here, but I could tell you that I'm not inclined to give any raises simply because, number one, um, the, uh, the number of events were slashed by half last year, number one. Number two, um, the museum went from seven days a week open to five days a week. And so, those are my concerns about the raises and the staffing. And, um, I'm just also curious about this fire suppression system at forty-five thousand one time. I, I wasn't aware that the museum was requiring to have a fire suppression system. I know that there's conversations about fire suppression systems in a lot of the older buildings in the city and for that matter, some of the new businesses not being required to have it, so I'm just wondering if this is being required for the museum.
Yeah, that was one of the items that did not make it on there.
Okay.
Same thing, I, I felt the other items were ahead of that.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's not something that's really that necessary.
Well, I'll also say that the advertising line item increase of a nine thousand dollar increase is also out of line when you have less than half the events. So unless we get those events all back on the calendar so that we have one every month, then I can't really, uh, legitima- or rationalize why we're given additional advertising, that's all I have.
I'll find out about the events.
Thank you.
I was not aware of that, but, uh, I, I will come back with, the, the job that he's done is, has really been, I mean, we, we talk about a lot about getting people downtown.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the few, you know, events or one of the few facilities that we have down there
Yeah.
that we really get a lot of foot traffic, particularly the, in the summer, is that museum, so.
Yeah. Counsel, Counselman, when you, um, are talking about the decrease in events, are you, uh, referring to just downtown events or specifically to the museum?
Specifically to the museum. The, there was the MLK that they were heading up, um, parade, um, and there was also the Mardi Gras parade that was headed up. There was also all of the farmers markets that were held monthly, those are all gone. Um, MLK's gone, Mardi Gras was gone, Cinco de Mayo is gone, nothing for...
Those, those are not specific to the museum.
Well, no, they were, they were quarterbacking them there, the, the museum, Main Street was quarterbacking those, yeah.
That was, that was...
Farmer's market was Main Street.
Yeah, well, those, those all need to be brought back.
I, I agree with it.
And, um, you know, then we also have the Hispanic Heritage Month coming up, um, and, and I haven't seen anything. And of course, then you have the Kids Fest, which was originally supposed to be in the summer for a back-to-school event. And here we have it after school is starting, number one, but now it's also, um, on the same day that the Give Back Festival over include is going on, and that's a, um, uh, I think probably, I, I don't even know what the factor is, but exponentially larger than what we're doing. And so, if we were gonna move it, we should've asked our neighbors, hey, what's going on? So that we could make sure that we have it on a weekend that, um, made sense, that wasn't conflicting with our neighbors. So just, uh, some, some housekeeping on that I wanted to add some questions on. Nothing more, thank you, Mayor.
Counselman Davis, you got anything to add? How about this side?
Dan, the generator, is it fourteen thousand dollars one time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Originally, he had taken a guess at five, and then, once we had the electrician look at it, it went to fourteen.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And he, it was also because he moved into that other side too, now he's bigger.
Counselman Russell?
Just wanted to say that the, uh, the MLK was not canceled for anything other than the weather.
You know, I would like to say, and I've been a, a strong supporter of Wade and what he's done at the, at the museum, um, since he's been there. And, uh, I will continue to support him. And, um, I, I too think it, it is a ma- truly an amazing transformation, um, that he has done down there. Alright, next on our list is the golf course. Although I, I haven't swung a club in over twenty-five years, I still get excited about what you're doing down there.
I haven't either. On mine, I have, uh, can we go through? I only had a couple of items on there, one of them was the, the pump station platform. That, that ten thousand dollars is actually not saying that I will need it this year, it's just, it's just giving a heads up that, that, that platform is, is showing somewhere, it's, it could honestly be another year, it could be another five years. Let, let's hope it's at least five. That's just, honestly, we're just giving counsel a heads up, that, that could be coming down the road. So that is not something that I'm saying, come October, I need that ten thousand dollars, I may not need it for another five years. Uh, the other one was the, uh, the cart path repair, that's something that we, we started a few years ago. We did it a couple of years, um, and then it was discontinued the last couple of years. There's still some areas of cart path that are, they're definitely needing some repair. Honestly, that, other than that, I had some equipment on base of my strategic plan that was coming up due this year. Uh, we took some of the funds that we had this year and we actually got those piece of equipment up and running. Um, I, and I say it for all my staff, they're, they're excellent at what they do with my mechanic. Uh, we went through, I'm talking, our, our mower that we have, the, uh, we, we took some metal and welded new siding to it. Uh, one of the, the mowers that we have, the, uh, we went through and bits and pieces of other mowers, replaced the engine. Um, so honestly, we're looking at another two, three years on those that were actually due this year in the strategic plan. So that, that wasn't on there. Uh, the only thing I did have is, when you kinda look at some of the numbers on the, uh, the golf course, uh, our revenue, when we go through, we set those numbers a little low just because of hurricanes, um, hopefully we don't see any, but any, any other, you know, weather events that are maybe out of the ordinary. So instead of saying that, you know, I'm looking at this revenue number, I, we try to play it safe. Uh, and so with that, um, a- a- at the same time, our expenses, our goal is to come in, and what our expenses are, we're, our goal is to come in well under that. I mean, that's based on, once again, my staff, you know, checking, make sure our costs, that we can find it somewhere else cheaper. We're, we're always looking into that, uh, our merchandise, uh, but our overall goal, so that we can kinda see, well, I guess this year, if we're looking at, my, my budget this year was one point two million, we're actually a little over one point one million, which is still a, a month ago. Uh, so we're looking at possibly coming in at about one point three million this year in revenue. Next year, obviously, our goal, uh, when we see that, like I said, our revenue numbers, based on our expenses, revenue numbers are a little low, expenses are a little high, looking at where our membership, where our, all of our costs, uh, grain fees, I, I mean, our goal is to come in about one point three to one point five million next year. That, that puts us right online, I mean, our, our goal is to honestly turn a profit, which I could not tell you in five years ago, two years ago, three years ago, I, I could've done that. I'm telling you now, where's the chance that we turn a profit next year? Uh, I mean, when we look at that, uh, this year, which I, I think when we talked to Mayor, I was looking at, hey, thirty-one thousand visitors this year, we're actually on track to about thirty-seven thousand this year. That's thirty-seven thousand visits to Freeport that we're getting. Uh, cool thing about that is two thousand, over two thousand of those are from our youth programs. Uh, when we, not included, we see, we host three different high school events, uh, about nine different schools come to that, uh, but over, excluding that as well, two thousand, uh, visits a year from our youth program, um, which in returns makes it a family event. If they're bringing their youth, that means the family's out there playing as well. That was our goal when I talked eighteen years ago, was to turn that to a family course, and this is what, exactly what we're doing. That's all I have, any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got one. Uh, the cart repairs, did we have a conversation about a rental, uh, getting some new carts one time, was it?
Now, on the, the cart repair, that's the cart path.
Oh, the cart, the one you drive on?
Yes.
Oh, okay, but didn't you get some, did we talk about something?
We just got a, uh, a new fleet of carts.
Oh, you did get a new fleet of carts?
Yes, and we had, and we actually, uh, the council approved
Yeah.
that we got the five additional carts this time.
Okay.
Thank you, because we still have a waitlist sometimes.
Okay, good, good, okay, and so that's, that's the path, that's good.
What is the rotation on the, the lease, what is that, five year?
It's, it's a four year, but usually about three years, um, which they're, they're looking to turn those over so they can get them and, and sell them. And it works out good for us, especially, like I said, with, with having sixty carts and doing thirty-seven thousand rounds, and we'll do forty thousand rounds next year, they're, they're going out every single day, if, uh, sometimes, what, more than once?
Two times.
Yeah, two times a day.
They're gassed, right?
They're gassed.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, I do see the growth in the, in, in the golf course. Uh, you know, I, so I guess you're doing a, a, a pretty good job over there. Uh, like you said, you, uh, five years ago or three years ago, you, you wouldn't think that, you know, uh, the golf course would be bringing in a million dollars. Uh, so, and, you know, the guys at work talk about it, uh, some, sometime they say they'd rather go to Freeport than to go to some of these other golf courses, uh, when they, when they plan their tournaments. Um, so, yeah, it's exciting to see the growth that you have going on in the golf course. I mean, me, I think, you know, that's, the city needs, I mean, I, I support the golf course, I mean, you know, cause I, when the city grows, see, I look ahead and down the line, and, and growth, you, you need stuff like that in, in your city, in your town. And some may say, well, uh, residents don't play golf or this and that way. But it brings people to, to the city that do play golf. Everybody don't have golf, you know, so, um, I'm, I'm excited to see the growth that you got, and I'm, I'm rooting you on to, to, to get a positive, get in the positive, I mean, cause you right there, look like.
It's, uh, it's pretty rare to have that, to have, you know, courses, especially municipal courses, uh, turn a profit. So we're, we're close, and you know, like you said, with the, you're looking at thirty-seven thousand visits a year. We, we don't have a grill, um, that we can really serve a lot of food, so, you know, when they're leaving, hopefully they're stopping somewhere in Freeport to have lunch or dinner.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, it, it helps the city, and, like I said, I'm, I'm your top attraction, take care of me.
Yeah, so, and so you said, uh, like, youth programs and stuff be doing, uh, tournaments, that's like fundraisers? They, they use that as a fundraiser, like high school?
So youth, youth probably, well, the high school, um, yes, they, they come in, uh, they've, when, when I started, we actually didn't have any events like that. So now we have three a year where the high schools come in, a district, one of them is a district tournament.
Oh, yeah.
And then the other two high schools just come in and they have like, if it's a high school doing a fundraiser, uh, but they host it at our course.
Yeah.
Our, our youth is, uh, something that we've taken on, gosh, that was actually a couple of years after I first started. Uh, a- and that was basically, we, fourteen and under, uh, play for free. Uh, it was, um, I, I guess that started when I, there was a gentleman that came in to play and he brought his son, and the next, uh, day I saw the, the gentleman and his son wasn't with him, I asked where he was, and he said, man, it's, golf's expensive, you know, and, and, you know, to bring this kid, uh, you know, that may only play three or four holes, he said, it's, he just can't afford that, and so what's, we looked at, uh, that actually has translated over to, uh, kinda some other stuff with our youth, where, uh, local high school. Well, we have lo- local, uh, high school kids that, um, may wanna take up the sport, but maybe can't afford the golf clubs. We've taken on a program too where we, we take in donations of clubs that we've had, the course, that we've gotten through sponsors that have helped us out. Uh, it's where we can give back to the local youth. Um, that stays actually in, in our local community of giving back to the kids with, uh, you know, whatever golf clubs and stuff that we can give them to get them headed in the right direction.
Good, it's good to know, good to hear. Appreciate you, appreciate all that you're doing over there. Yeah, cause I was thinking about, you know, like the, for, I'm gonna be, you know, taking over the booster club here at Brazosport, and I hear golf tournaments, fundraisers, maybe I can come visit with you and see how to set that up. I don't know how to set up a...
No, absolutely, I mean, and we have it all the time where people come in and say, hey, look, I, and I was here for an event and, man, we wanna do something for our church. Uh, we wanna do something there, and we, we sit down with them, we guide them the whole way. Uh, we're, I will tell you, we are the, the most affordable, uh, to, to host a tournament.
Right.
And, and that's what it takes because you're trying to get the most money you can.
Right.
So, yeah, absolutely, be more than happy.
Alright, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, I got a question, uh, does Brazosport golf team still come out there?
Yes, sir, they've actually grown, uh, quite a bit, uh, the amount of participants they have. Uh, gosh, I remember when, years ago, you'd see five to seven of them, and, uh, we, we're averaging around twenty to thirty now.
Is there any other school that comes?
No, uh...
Brazosport's the only school?
Brazosport, we, we host Brazosport, uh, yeah, that's, that's it.
I know they used to, I didn't know if they still were.
No, no, they've actually grown quite a bit, yeah.
How about, how about the success of those golfers in high school? In, last year, we had one that went, um, almost to state or something like that, if I'm not mistaken.
We had, we had one, yes, that playoff, it was, I believe she got a hole in one
Oh, wow.
to help her advance, so, yeah, pretty neat.
George, you got anything for the golf course?
Brian, um, thank you for, for what you're doing. Um, the, you said you had to rebuild a mower, um, is this a specialized mower?
Yes, all of our mowers are basically, I mean, when you have, you know, the grass on the greens, it's that tall, it's the real mowers.
Okay.
Uh, we have those, we have, we do have a couple of tractors to mow, uh, it's about a hundred and seven acres is what we're taking care of. Um, we do have a couple of tractors, uh, one of those are actually one of the things that we rebuilt. But yes, there, most of them are all, uh, because you have such, uh, turf, it's, they're real mowers.
Okay, a- and the reason I'm asking is, um, in a couple of weeks, I'll be over there for a couple of days with our, um, Phillips sixty-six refinery, uh, tournaments. And one of the things is, uh, all the golfers, I mean, we even had a executive vice president come, come down and play, and he stated your course was the best municipal course that he's played on. And this is a guy, this is a guy that plays some of the nicest courses in the entire US. Um, and he was like, wow, he was really impressed.
Thank you.
Um, and so, my, my thing is, I wanna, I thank y'all for fixing and making do with what you have, but i- if there is something that you need to help make it, uh, an easier, make it look, uh, good, um, please, please ask us, cause I mean, you're, you're right there, and, and I would hate for y'all to put all this work in and then have a machine go down and then you're stuck. Um, and so, uh, that's something that I, I, I'd like for y'all to consider, um, see, see what a cost would be, um, on that. And then, the other thing, um, you and I have talked, um, real good friends, a golf coach at Brazosport. Um, I would actually like to see, um, instead of them or the golf, uh, team paying, that dues, maybe we can do that ourselves. Cause I, I don't think it's a, a big amount.
Right.
So, um, and that would hopefully spur on more, uh, players, younger players to play, um, especially if they're on the, on the golf team.
I have, am I, I believe that's just, just came up correct, about the golf team? So if that's something that you're looking at, um, if that's something that, you know, you decide or whatever, about the, with the golf team, um, cause I know what we did is, we greatly reduced what their membership would be compared to anything else, but if you, if the city decides they wanna wait... But if you, if the city decides they want to waive that, um, please let me know quickly because we're at that.
Okay.
We're at that point where that's getting started up.
What kind of, what kind of funds are we talking about?
Uh, so, it's fifty dollars, uh, per student and they have twenty students this year.
Okay.
As of now, that we're signing up for the golf team.
Okay.
I, I'm okay with cutting it.
Yeah.
I like Phillips sixty-six and sponsor it, right? You get corporate sponsors? There you go. There you go.
We, we definitely sponsor quite a bit here. We'll continue to sponsor.
Yes, your, your event that you host out there is, it's actually right there at the top with, of events that we have.
Yes.
I appreciate that, absolutely.
Yes. So, yeah. Um, bring us a total cause, I'd like to see what that is.
Okay.
For, for that.
Okay.
And counsel, I would like to, um, to add, if Brian continues on this path, uh, we really need to start looking into a field house. A clubhouse, call it what you want. A house where he can sell, sell clubs and balls and hats and shirts and hamburgers.
Like I said, that's where we're, that's where we're, that's where if you truly want to start turning a profit, that's where it's at.
May, may.
Have a grill, you know, we cater our own tournaments, uh, we actually have food to serve. Uh, the climate controlled indoor facility that I can not only, like I said, when we host tournaments, it's indoor or a climate controlled facility. But when we leave for the day or if we need to have it where we can lock it off and separate it to where we can rent it out, you know, for events, birthday parties, uh, whatever, I've had, uh, I've had, oh, and I've had companies, you know, come to me saying, you know, if our pavilion was even climate controlled, they would love to have had safety meetings where at the end of the safety meeting, they go and they play nine holes of golf. Um, that's not happening. Zero.
He's speaking the truth.
I, I, I gave very conservative numbers a few years ago, uh, and that was shot down quicker than I could have written it up. But, uh, if you want, guys want to take the next step, that, that's where it's at, that.
Yeah, we needed to, um, start talking about that again. Counsel, any, any other questions or comments for Brian?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
Brian, you know, I've been a big critic of, uh, the budget that we spend, of the amount of monies that we spend on the golf course. But I've never been a critic of you because I actually think you're, I mean, everybody knows, you know what you're doing over there. You're always delightful to, to interact with and speak with. And I think that carries over to all the tournaments and all the interactions with all the various organizations that are renting out or going out there to golf. I have, uh, I have no doubt that our golf course is the best one in Presoria County. And so, I was curious about our fees and what do we charge compared to, what's the Lake Jackson Golf Course?
Wer- the Wilderness.
The Wilderness. What's the fee, uh, per round of golf comparison between the Wilderness and?
There, so there, um, they're eighty dollars on the weekend.
Mm-hmm.
We're fifty.
When did you last raise that, Brian?
Uh, last year.
From what to what?
Uh, forty-five.
So, I'm gonna call you on a couple of things, numbers, just some random numbers that I wanted to share with the public so that we get some perspective on this. And, um, kind of like what I was telling Motley, you know, it's kind of like, we may have to do more with less. But I think in the golf course, there's some other opportunities. Um, number one, I don't believe, I'm, I'm actually certain of it, that the golf course is, though it's the number one golf course in the county, I don't believe it's the, the number one attraction in Freeport. The number one attraction in Freeport is actually the beach. Well over a hundred thousand on that. And so, unlike the golf course, people are going through the city to get to the, to the beach. They go through the Buc-Ee's Beach, I mean, Surfside's Buc-Ee's or even the in-town Buc-Ee's and, and everything in, in between. How do I know that they're going there? Because I can also see all the trash from our churches out there on the beach. You know, all the, uh, the local restaurants. So, that said, I mean, I don't want to diminish the idea that we're not a, it's not a great destination, that we're, you're not running a great operation, right? And I like the fact that you're seeing numbers increasing, that we might break even or maybe even surpass. But I'm always just trying to think, are we doing the best with the money that we're using? And so a couple of things is, if I'm looking at five hundred thousand dollars to get over to the police department, I'm thinking, where does, where does that come from? And I'm looking at the golf course. You're projecting one point five million next year. You're asking for one point five. You're thinking you're gonna break one point five. Do you think you could make one point five with one million? Well, if you don't, if you're stuck with the same budget of one million, you'd probably still get what you had this year, if not exceed it. And I thought, well, how can we do both? How can we ensure that we get the one point five in revenue with the one million budget, with the one point one million budget? And so a couple of ideas, um, I'd like to see is that, uh, you know, I'm looking at five hundred thousand, you said thirty seven thousand rounds of golf. Well, five hundred thousand divided by thirty seven thousand is thirteen dollars and fifty cents. So I thought, that's where I was looking, where the Wilderness. If we raise the rates from fifty to sixty-three, or even just even a nice round number, sixty-five, we will get that five hundred thousand and then some, just by raising the rates. And we're still gonna be at a discount than the Wilderness, number one. And so I look at this in the same way that I look at the beach plan that Surfside has and that Freeport doesn't. We are leaving millions on the table by not charging our guests.
I agree.
So you have a hundred thousand plus, the estimate's around one twenty, but let's just say a hundred, and we charge the same as Surfside, that's three million dollars. If we even say, you know what, let's just, let's estimate half of those people come in, that's one point five million dollars that we, that we're not even trying to capture. And it pays for the additional expenses of cleaning and police work. And for that matter, gives us that much more money to help pay for the police department, to help pay for the fire department and the real needs that we need. And for that matter, salaries to be competitive. So I'm interested in seeing, you know, an increase. Why? Because I'm not interested in giving away what's awesome about Freeport. What, what's awesome about Freeport is the water. What's awesome about Freeport is, so apparently we have a, a top tier golf course managed by a top tier golf manager, right? And so, you know, I think about that and I'd like to make sure that, you know, I think last, the last time we spoke and you had presented it, you something like five percent of the residents of Freeport use the golf course. And I don't know if that, that needle's moved much, but that's not very much. And I'm big, I'm a big proponent, if we're gonna be spending a million dollars, that the residents of Freeport should be, uh, benefiting from that. Not just the reputation of Freeport. I mean, it's great, hey, Freeport's got a, a great, uh, golf course, but who's using it here? It's the same thing with the rec center. I'm offering a whole new rec center, throw in the kitchen sink at the rec center. Why? Because I know the majority of usage of that rec center is gonna be Freeport residents. And so, um, you know, we're, we're talking about the golf course. I, I'd like to see that we in fact do raise the rates because I think the demand is there. You know? If you raise the rates, I think the numbers are gonna still be there. Why? Because we're gonna still be competitive. Now, had you said that, uh, the Wilderness was, you know, sixty-five or seventy dollars, they'd be different. But you start looking at eighty, a fifteen dollar or seventeen and a half dollar variation, people are gonna say, yeah, we're going to Freeport. Not only because of the price difference still, but because it's still better. And so, um, I'd like to see, you know, um, number one, that we have the budget from the golf course reduced by five hundred thousand so that we have that for the police department, number one. But I'd also like to see that that money be made up easily by the price increase. I mean, look, if we think that the, the Freeport police, excuse me, if we were to believe that the Freeport golf course is as awesome as it is, which I believe it is, I've seen it, we keep talking about it, and the numbers have been improving, then there's no reason why we should be giving it away. And I think there's other opportunities for corporate sponsorships to come in there. Yeah, and we've been talking about the clubhouse back, my first year here, I said, we need a clubhouse. Unfortunately, three, three years ago or two and a half years ago, they came up with one that had a really shoddy design. I won't even get into that conversation, but you may recall the conversation about the aesthetic of what it looked like. It was, it was not acceptable. But yeah, but here's the thing, you can do that clubhouse and you can get a corporate sponsor. You can call it the Dow Clubhouse, whatever you want to get it. You know, there is this money out here. And we can do it, just like we're gonna be seeking for the money on the fire department. We can be doing it on the golf. I mean, if we're getting thirty seven thousand eyeballs in rounds of golf, that's just the rounds of golf. That's not even the family, you know, members that come along with them, sitting in the back over here in the parking lot or in the park, having a bag of lunch or whatever. Those are additional eyeballs that certainly Dow, LNG, anybody else would love to have their name on and to build that. I think that we, um, Jerry's not here, I don't know if he, if anybody remembers what the cost point, do you remember what the cost point we were looking at for that, uh, the clubhouse? I think it was something like one million, one point two million?
It was, it was, it was well over that. That was, uh, I mean, instead of building a feasible clubhouse, it was like, we'll shoot for the moon.
Yeah, yeah. And we were talking about, but I could tell you now, you know, you get, you get, um, you know, Papa's barbecue, just throw in a, a, a big name barbecue place. Come in there and be the anchor tenant.
Right.
That's gonna attract that many more people. I don't really recommend at all that we try to do it, that the city tries to run a restaurant. I think that's a bad idea, personally.
Absolutely.
But we get a, an anchor tenant in there, flagship, they'll probably pay for it. If we say, hey, you guys get to be, the, it's kind of like what Beck's Prime did over at Memorial Golf Course.
And at one time, that's what we had when we decided to go with the Dow. Instead of the people that, developers that came in and said, hey, look, we wanna, we wanna do all this, we wanna build your clothes, or clubhouse. We wanna put a grill in, we're gonna run the grill, we're gonna run the cottages in there. Um, and at that time, the city said, no, we'll, we'll take the money from Dow and and now, and now we can't do that anymore. We can't build on there or whatever was, I don't know, I, I wasn't, once that started, I was kicked out of meetings, so.
Well, the, the conversations and the, and the actionables, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and piecemeal you to, hey, you know, let me know what it costs for an additional lawnmower, another club, set of clubs. I want real things to give you actions on that are gonna bring real value to the golf course, to make it sustainable, to grow it and make it sustainable for its growth. And that to me right there says, hey, we need to be looking at corporate sponsors for these events. And we do need, we do need to be looking at raising our rates. But really, the corporate sponsorship, the restaurant side of things around here, they're printing money. And Freeport's not really, uh, capturing all that, um, corporate, uh, what do they call that? It's called, uh, well, let's just leave it at corporate sponsorships. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Brian, uh, kudos to your team and yourself for the revenue that y'all were able to, to grind out. That's a lot of rounds of golf. I mean, we had a larger course and we, we, thirty-two thousand is what we were doing. So you do thirty-seven, it's incredible. The course, it's a hundred and how many acres?
Hundred and seven.
Okay, because we were a hundred and sixty-four or so. Uh, that's, that's really a tremendous achievement. So you and your team should take a victory lap. That's, well, I mean, I know you still have the end of the year, but that's, that's really impressive, so. Uh, now, you, you talked to me one time about you sort of rotate your rates and so you were gonna be increasing, I believe, your membership rates?
The membership rates will go up this year. Uh, now, and that's, that's what was approved through council, you know, last year. We, we looked at the, the rate, the daily or the green fee rates and then your membership rates. Last year, we did the, uh, the, uh, daily rate, the green fee rates, and then that was approved through the city council. At the same time, it was also approved with the membership rates. But we were like, we were gonna kind of one year memberships, next year, uh, green fee. And so this year will be membership. Now, at the same time, what you're saying, you know, is maybe go to whatever number you guys come up with. If you say, hey, look, in October, we want to go up to, your, your membership rate's gonna go up, uh, we want the green fee rate. That's you guys. Um, if you decide that's what you want to do, let me know.
Well, what kind of impact do you think? Five, ten, fifteen?
You know, I, I know that if we're looking at, if we're fifty, you just have to make sure when you're raising your rates that, I mean, that you, you jump up too high and that thirty-seven thousand rounds, well, there, you know, there's pros and cons to both of that. You can say, okay, look, we go up too high, you know, I'm gonna go to this other course, man, they're only this much. You know, you have Bay City that has eighteen hole, we have a few nine hole courses in the area, but you know what, man, this is a little much. I think I'm gonna go over here. You know, you may see that. The other side of it is, if you, if you raise your rates and you get those people that are saying, you know, you don't get that many that leave, now your rates are higher.
You're in a better, yeah, you're in a better spot because you're not having to push your team as hard to get all those rounds in for less money.
You know, um, it's maybe not as much wear and tear.
Right, right. So why, why don't you, I mean, it's a different conversation, but just to have that analysis.
Believe me, whatever you're about to ask, I've studied it over and over and, and I would say five dollars.
Yeah.
I, I've done that. If, if we want to go ten, we may push that to where we may lose some, but enough may stay around to where we're, we don't have as many rounds, but the revenue is higher. If, if you kind of know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's a sliding scale, for sure.
Right. Uh, so it's, what's, I'm sorry?
What's, what's Bay City, what's Bay City at? The Bay City Golf Course?
Uh, they're, they're actually pretty close to us. I think they're actually very close to us.
Do they or Wilderness have, uh, the, uh, membership?
Yes.
They do?
Yes, and, um, Wilderness has a different program they go with on their membership. Uh, they, they have their regular membership, but they also have a, a little, a different little rate that would not suit us well at all.
Well, just take a look at those rates, you know, what kind of five, ten, fifteen increments?
Fifteen, fifteen is what we're doing for membership.
Try to see what that, I, I mean on the green fees and see how that, you know, think about that, have another meeting with.
I, I, I have already. That's what I'm saying, when, when you asked me, I'm already.
Just bring it on to me, let's take a look at it. I know you were planning on skipping them this year, but we'll take a look at that. We'll see what kind of revenue that and your increase in your membership would generate.
If you, if you look at, i- if you did, if you did ten dollars, um, and you look at, if, if, calculator.
Say it drops to thirty.
What's that?
At ten, say it drops to thirty.
Yeah, well, you, and it would, if you look at, if you went to ten dollars and out of that, we're getting, you're probably getting about, what's, what's fifteen thousand? What is?
It's nine hundred thousand.
Well, no, no, because it, you're, you're thirty-seven thousand, but you're.
But he says you go to sixty and, and it goes to thirty, you know, basically sixty dollars.
But you're having that, you're at that thirty, let's say it went to thirty thousand, you're still looking at about probably fifteen thousand, half of that is your membership.
Okay.
So you, let's say fifteen thousand.
I, I'm not sure how you're developing or how you're, um, pointing to thirty-seven thousand, what's that comprised of? If that's like individual, independent people coming in or is that a combination with members as well?
Thousand is basically visits a year. Uh, that's based on if they're, when they walk in, are they a member? Are they, are they paying a green fee? And so you look at about, we're about split.
What's the membership fee?
Uh, membership fee is, right now, we're at a hundred and, was it twenty, was it one twenty a month? One fifteen a month.
Fifteen for seven days.
And then you're like ninety for Freeport?
Yeah, and then we have a discounted rate for, uh, Freeport residents.
How do we compete, compare, I should say, to Wilderness in terms of our memberships?
So what Wilderness does, what they have, uh, we, we have about two hundred, we're actually two hundred eighty-six members. They, they have over four hundred on this, what they, their players program. What that basically is, is that sixty dollars a month. Uh, sixty dollars a month is what you pay and then.
Six zero?
Six zero. Uh, so sixty dollars a month, but then every time you play, you have to rent a golf cart. So that's twenty dollars. So that's, that's, but they also, they also include the driving range. I, I'm not messing with my driving range numbers. There, when we built that, uh, when we added on to the tee box, my revenue went up three times. Um, I'm not touching that, that driving range rate or, or that revenue. That is, that is pure profit.
Nice.
Yeah, so.
So that, are they charging the car fee to try to, like, those players that do a membership that play the heck out of, you know, that use it a lot?
Well, I mean, I guess.
Drive it down?
Uh, i- if you, if you look at it, you go, okay, sixty dollars a month. And every, you, you pay that and you get the, you get the driving range, unlimited driving range, uh, sixty dollars a month. So you get unlimited driving range, green fees, uh, but every time you play, it's twenty dollars. The thing is, is you're probably hoping that you get someone that says, man, look, every time I play, it's only twenty dollars. Let's just go there. But after your tenth time of playing that month, now you're two sixty a month. So, and that's close to, you know, their member, their actual membership is two hundred and something.
Okay.
A month. So, but you don't. You have people that are really, may, maybe they're just playing the weekend. But yeah, like I said, they, they cap it at four hundred and they, they're sitting at four hundred with that. It, it just does not work for us. Our rates are not where we can do that.
For our next beat, just bring those numbers in with you. Our next beating, just bring those numbers in with you.
Hey, uh, anybody else got a clubhouse? Like, uh,
Now, I will.
I ain't gonna tell, uh, uh.
The Wilderness? The Wilderness?
Wilderness, uh, I mean, anybody?
They, they all do. Yeah, I, I mean, and when we're talking these, talking this, I, more than welcome. I mean, just to kind of see where we stand versus, take a look at our clubhouse.
We have a clubhouse. We in fact do have a clubhouse. It's, it's just not up to, you know, state of the art.
Well, I mean.
Now, it's, it's frustrating.
No, yeah, the one we were talking about, we need to build so we can, what is that? That's, that's clubhouse?
That's a clubhouse.
Yeah, but we don't have a, a climate control. We don't have a.
No, we, we have the, the barn.
The barn, yeah, no. Yeah, no. Yeah, I'm talking about, you know, like, like, like a little house, like they be building, yeah. Uh, but do the other golf courses around here, they have, they have one of them?
Yes.
Climate control and, yeah, so that puts them on another, another level in the playing field, especially when, when you, when you dealing with the price wise too.
Right.
Yeah, but I like to ease it up to five and, and, and then the ten. But when we bust even, like you said, bring the numbers or whatever, and next year too, still now we can be looking, once we bust even or, or, or come, climb over the hill, when you add that, when you add that clubhouse to it, n- now it's, now it's going to be a profit in it. I mean, it's going, because you can, you can rent it, you can, like you say, you can sell s- uh, snacks and food and, you know, you'll make, you'll make one. I know you already got them ideas, but I'm some, council need to see that and the council need to see this picture too.
And, and I, and I know Dan comes to me and I, I mean, that's all I, that's all I think is numbers. That's, that's all that matters. Um, but you know, when we look at it, we're, you said thirty-two thousand at the course. We're at thirty-seven. We're, we're truly, we're, like I said, we have wait lists. We're, we're, we're maxing out.
So the demand is there. That's why the price you can adjust.
Right. Uh, so, yeah, when we, I mean, topping out, we have to start thinking, how do we get to the next levels? But I, I will have those numbers for you.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question.
Uh, does, uh, Lee Jackson host any professional tournaments?
No.
They don't?
No.
I was just wondering.
No, I mean, I know they host like events, uh, you know, golf tournaments, um.
I'm talking about the Wilderness.
Right, right. But no, not, not a professional event.
Closest one is in Houston.
Yes, sir.
Brian, we thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
And keep it up. Uh, next we have grant match requests by the police department.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So this is, uh, we do not know yet if we will be receiving this grant or not. Uh, but this is a grant that Detective Fernandez have, has applied for, and so the match that grants twenty-one thousand. Um, and this is for two, it's a cybersecurity grant, and I believe it is two, I'm double checking real quick. Yes, two switches for our server. Um, the ones that we currently have are at end of life. And so therefore Detective Fernandez went ahead and applied for the grant. Um, but it won't be till later on that we know, but it will be affecting into this budget if we do receive that. And that would be the grant match that would be associated with it. It was a total of one, one oh eight, so.
Yeah, so twen- twenty-one thousand six oh five is what it would be our.
Yes.
Our portion.
That would be our portion.
This is something that, um, if needed be, we could, uh, do a budget amendment at that time.
Correct.
As opposed to.
But we, but we did just want to go ahead and provide that information upfront.
We appreciate that. Uh, any questions, gentlemen? George, you're kind of hard to read tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, next we have council requests that were received. Dan, you want to go over these?
Yes, sir. My pleasure. So there were a, a few that we had received. Uh, one was from, uh, Councilman Matt Morris about the Slaughter Road generator. Uh, so we've had some people out pricing that. We're taking a swag at it right now until the actual quote comes back. But, uh, one of the contractors had told us that we're within the ballpark there for fifty thousand. That's a generator, so when the power goes out there, that the plant station will still work in the sewer. Uh, Councilman Pena had asked about an additional splash pad and some palapas. Uh, so we had ten on there, but I've written twenty on mine just to ensure that we had sufficient amount of funding for that. So those were the two that we're talking about. Ah, sorry. I have been corrected once again. Thank you, Ashley. Yes, ma'am. Uh, so anyway, drop that back down to the ten. So, uh, that's for that one.
What about this request on the alley behind the Met, the Methodist Church?
We're going, yeah, we're going to try to fund that out of this year. So we're looking back through some emails. There were supposed to have been three quotes already for it. But we can't find the one right now. Uh, the one is under thirty thousand. So we could move forward with that if, if that's what council would like and we could get that done before the end of the fiscal year. But it's the alleyway, we had done some work on it behind the Methodist Church and between the Methodist Church and the, the senior, uh, homes back there, the apartments back there, townhomes. So we have a lot that cross that. Um, so we, we would like to try to spoon that out to ensure that no tripping hazard or anything else like that. So we think we can get that done now. And again, if council's fine with it, uh, we'll, we'll, I'll get the quote out and if it's ready, we can move tomorrow on that, yeah.
Actually, on that particular item there, um, with the, that county road credit that we have of the two miles, can we use some of that toward that?
Uh, well, the, the county road, I don't think that's going to be approved probably until, uh, after the fiscal year. So, uh, we have some additional monies that are left in the public works account that we'd like to go ahead and use, uh, for that. But the county road will go all the way until September thirtieth of next year. And then what council comes up with, whatever they want to come up with, would be there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'd like to see, um, you know, roads and that are using our, every dollar, hundred percent of our, our tax dollars are, are budgeted monies to go to, um, roads that are used by the masses. Um, and that all these other side streets and corridors and alleys be used, be used in the county money. This way, we're saving on those spaces that are not, you know, highly trafficked.
One, one thing we're going to have to think about, um, when it comes to the county roads is, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, uh, the county changed up the way they, they had that program to where we used to could pick, pick and choose, you know, a five hundred foot lot, a road here, a hundred foot road over there, a two hundred foot road over there until it, uh, met up to the two mile.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but in the last year or two, they changed it to where it's going to be a two mile stretch or a one and a half mile stretch as opposed to a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit over there. And we need to wait and see what that contract looks like at this point.
Can we have any preemptive conversations with county for, as the city?
Not yet, but, uh, I do, in reference to what the mayor's talking about. I worked a lot with contractors on overlays and, and some drainage and paving. Uh, there's a high mobilization cost. So that's the primary driver behind them wanting to keep it to a section. Our contractors were all the same way. They wanted to try to do a stretch in one place or sidewalks in one area just because they, they, it would eat up your budget, that mobilization cost. So we'll find out about it.
Yeah, I, um, I think I emailed this, um, piece, piece and some of the information on this, but I could just tell you the spitball figures right now, when we're talking about trying to make up, um, the money for, you know, capital projects on the water, the police department raises and all the other operational needs of the police department. And for that matter, the fire department or first responders, and we're trying to find out all these ways to make money or find money. And we got to look at cuts and we're looking at all the creativity at the golf course that, that, fortunately, the golf course presents a lot of great opportunities for us to actually generate income. But like I said, you know, we're, we're leaving money on the table here and I want to make sure that, uh, we request also a five hundred thousand dollar line item for our beach. And, and that money would be used toward the beach plan to, um, initiate the, uh, the fees collection at the beach as soon as possible. Because even at fifty, fifty, fifty thousand, which is more, less than half of the visitor ship that we have annually, we would be at, if we were just at the same price as surf site, and I think our beach is actually cleaner and nicer and safer, that we would have, um, easily one point five million dollars right there. And it would pay for itself and then make the city an additional million dollars, if not more, because now we got all that additional sales tax because people are coming, because it's a better experience. Right now, the expect, the experience is, leaves a lot to be, uh, desired. So I wanted to make sure that I included that line item, but I was going to make a presentation at the next meeting on the, uh, the beach plan and help bring it all together. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions or comments before we move on? Ashley, you awake? Come up here and tell us what this, um, last slide means. One, it's, um, I don't know if it's brown or burnt orange.
Um, so this is just an overview of the available resources we had after, uh, the proposed, or, uh, uh, looking at the end of the proposed budget. Um, and then a recap of everything that you've heard here tonight. Everything highlighted in yellow on your list totals the one point four million. There is total available resources of one point six million.
So if I'm understanding you right, as we were going through this, all the highlighted items are calculated in this one point, one point four five five.
Yes, sir.
Which is below what we anticipate, and not by a whole lot, but it is below.
That's correct. And also, um, we had spoken, if council obviously, um, is okay with it. Also, we would like to use any of the available resources towards the end of the year to earmark towards the, um, the ambulance that, um, and war fire truck that Motley is needing.
Yes, we have a plan to try to set aside about half of the cost of the ambulance. Uh, we're going to try to do a, a pool project out of it and, uh, uh, that other asphalt, small asphalt job.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Hurst?
Yeah, um, on that last comment here, um, by Mr. Pennington here, if we're going to try to, I mean, he just kind of, it kind of runs counter to what we discussed when we were talking about what we were going to try to do for the fire department and the equipment needs, the, the one point seven and the four hundred thousand. Um, if we haven't decided what we're doing yet with that in terms of the budget, whether we're going to try to get the industry to pay for that, I'm not sure how, how wise it is or why we are then going ahead and applying money toward that. Um, I just want to make sure that I understand that.
Applying money towards.
This wouldn't be till the end of, end of twenty twenty-six, uh, uh, end, uh, end of year recap. This is how much we have left over. Can we earmark this for?
Yeah.
For a future need.
I mean, if you earmark it, then it, it, then it commits it to it, doesn't it?
No, 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 it's just in cupboard.
So along the way.
If y'all change your mind, if industry comes forward, but none of this is for like the fire truck that he was talking about that would be industry. This was the, only the ambulance and it was going to be two hundred towards the ambulance. If per se, industry or something comes up that could pay for the whole fire truck and ambulance, I mean, now you're talking two point one million dollars.
They got it.
But, but just.
Yeah, hey, we don't ask, we won't receive if we don't ask.
That's true. It, it'll part ways with it, but if they do, the money, the money's not in cupboard. So it could change.
I just want to, um, you weren't here, but the port was going to give us for the east end, four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, I, I've heard the story.
Yeah, we ended up with eight point six million because we kept on insisting on ten and twelve.
Yeah, so again.
Same thing here. I just want to make sure we ask.
Yeah, the, the money is going for the ambulance. It's just strictly will be in cupboard. We'll have to go another year to get the other half. But if something else comes through, that, just like the money was moved into it, the money can be moved out of it.
Got it. I wish Mr. Gesicki was here. He would be fun to ask him if he, they'd commit, put him on the spot. Thank you.
All right. It is now ten oh seven. We're going to close the regular meeting of, uh, Freeport City Council and open a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six annual budget. Ms. Hurst?
Um, yes, sir. With our whole whopping two residents that are still here, if you would like to come up and speak on the budget, um, there will be another opportunity on Tuesday night and again on the fifteenth. Um, but we wanted to give you the floor to do so tonight.
Come on up.
Good evening. Uh, thank you all for having this special meeting regarding the, the, uh, water and sewer rates and the budget. And I know the last two meetings have been very long, but as a citizen, I'm, I'm very impressed with the city council that of the sixteen years I've lived here, y'all have take, you're taking a lot of time and, and thought to come up with the budget that, um, the city can afford. So thank you. And also hearing that the legislature may make these terrible changes, um, you know, it makes it even more important that y'all take the time to discuss it because we got a lot of smart people up here. And Mr. Pennington and Ashley, my gosh, you're doing a great job. Um, so I'll just, I'll go through this pretty quickly. My name's Melanie Oldham. I live at five thirty-one West Brazos. And, uh, as far as, um, here we go, revenue, I, I have mentioned before that everybody I've talked to, that cities that have at least part-time grant writers, someone that would go to each department head and ask what their needs are presently, what they're going to need in the next five years and be, there's so many grants out there, especially for low-income communities. I think a grant writer, part-time, as-needed type grant writer would more than pay for themselves. Um, because I know like the police department has a part-time grant writer and he's brought in a lot of money in the past for, um, different things for the police department. Um, also, um, I remember when Mr. Petty, uh, worked out the deal with, uh, Mr. Toby Davenport that owns the city hall, twenty-six thousand or whatever a month. And I remember Mr. Davenport said he would work really hard to make sure every office in that building was rented because that's a heck of a lot of money per month. So I don't know where we're at. I'm making sure that's rented. Um, also, I was trying to remember on the Heritage House downtown, uh, it seemed like there was money set aside for that. We used to rent that out to corporations, Dow and everybody, and we made a lot of money renting out that Heritage House. But I haven't heard if that's on hold or if we still have that money set aside. So, um, I just took some quick notes. When y'all were discussing the, um, water and sewer rates, you know, just, uh, thank you again, Ashley and Mr. Pennington for coming up with two more options for y'all. And I think, uh, you're right, option F and H look like, sound like the best one from what little I know. And, um, I think it's great that we're going to, uh, you know, we don't want to increase the rates, but the reality is they're going to have to be increased. But I like the, the fact that you're looking at keeping it down as low as possible for residents and small business. And I think that's been thought out very well. Um, let's see, cover that. So, real quick, I'll go through, um, administration. Um, I've mentioned and I know Ashley knows that because. because of past audits, you know, there's over and over, they talk about material weaknesses and how the auditor has to figure out. I think this software, 27K plus 3K plus the open government, 29K, I think it'd be more than worth it to make it, keep everything open and transparent for Ashley and the whole city. I think it'd be worth, it's a lot of money, but I think it would really pay off. Also, Freeport Police Department, I think it's so important, even though the budget's going, it needs to be tight this year, but I think that they do deserve a COLA of 5.5%. Overtime increases, I think they deserve that. The hiring bonus, 5,000. I know there's like 475K or so for vehicles. I don't know, you might take a look at that, at how much is, if it's needed, but for sure, we need to support our Freeport Police Department, and anyway, I think that's very important. The same with our fire and EMS. If I heard the chief, that most of the services are EMS services and a smaller percent fire services, so I think the going, looking in, having an action plan to look for a volunteer fire department is a really good idea. So, and then on the new ambulance, I was trying to understand, the prices, it's in the budget for 400K, but I think y'all were saying that actually 250K or so would be in this budget, because it'll take two years to order it, and then on the fire engine, 1.7 million. Again, it sounds like you're going out and looking for corporations that could put money in, and they really should. Like, I could tell you the whole story about Freeport LNG, but thank goodness for the Freeport Police Department in 2022 that saved, well, they did a great job out there.
Fire Department.
Fire Department. Yeah, the fire department. I'm sorry, I'm tired. The fire department, you know, was out there during the explosion fire. Let's see, Public Works. Yeah, we do have a beautification committee, and thanks to Philip 66 and others for putting money in on that for some of the playground equipment. Okay, and then, let's see, I can't even read my writing, I'm so tired. Okay, let's see, the rec center and the golf course. Again, I'm not a golfer, and I know that survey was done, I don't know when, and the golf course is a quote "service," but it's not really a direct service for us residents at Freeport, if there's only 5% to 10% of us that use it, and unfortunately, it's way out there on 36, so a lot of people don't even come in through town, some do, but I think someday, if you did a survey of us right here in Freeport, you know, where the money could be focused on, that would be like a rec center. As a physical therapist, I can see great potential for having pickleball, racquetball, an improved gymnasium, a bigger place with weights to work out, and then the beach. Our Freeport Bryan Beach is, is doing well, but it could do so much better, simple things like being able to pay for more trash cans, like Quintana Beach has on the other side, restrooms and a shower, outdoor shower. I mean, that's why a lot of people go to the Quintana Beach. Things like that are so important that we need to have a beach plan to utilize that. So, anyway, if you did a survey to see what kind of services people right here would be more likely to use between the, and maybe we could do all, because Bryan's done a great job on the golf course, I'll say that, but again, how many of us actually residents here go and play golf, but I, for sure, we can afford to go down to the beach and to the rec center. All right, and I had some other thoughts, but yeah, thank you for staying, and thank you for all working together on this budget, so I appreciate it. Okay. Oh, and we need to all pitch in and get a big coffee maker if these meetings are going to go long.
I just want to answer you about the Heritage House. So, there's still 372,500 dollars that is designated for that in the bond funds. So, it's, it is still there. So, I believe it went on hold after the issues with IAD Architects.
We put out another RFQ after that and didn't get any responses.
We can do another one. I think we got the right staff to put it out there the right way now.
Yes, we can.
I don't think they did it right last time.
And the grant writer, I do agree that it would be something great to have. I expressed the same opinion that I expressed to Mr. Pennington. I'll say to the public, it's very hard to know what grants you're supposed to be writing for when we don't even know what projects we have, so that's one of the main reasons that I brought up the capital improvement plan. I think the city of Freeport needs one desperately, and then, of course, let's get to writing, but it's very hard for us to say we need funds for X, Y, and Z when we don't really know what X, Y, and Z are. Instead, projects are popping up, and we're having to deal with it as they come, and that's the unfortunate side.
Yeah, instead of whack-a-mole, we would like to be able to know what we need to replace or what kind of timeline, but to that point, Ashley also contacted another company. I think I sent them an email waiting for them to contact me. We'll be paying them to actually write what are the grants that we're going to try to pursue for the city hall. The funding for that grant's nearly $25,000, but it's also a grant that if it funds, it could be in the millions, so, you know, the ask is worth it, in my opinion. They have a high success rate, and they came very highly recommended, so that's what we're going to try.
Good stuff. Absolutely.
Seems, it just seems like to me that a grant writer would pay for theirself, whether it's a man or a woman. I've always said that we, as a city, need a grant writer, an experienced grant writer, somebody that does it for a living. They would know the grants that's out there, the grants that's available, and it'd be just left up to us to let that grant writer know what we want to do, and then they go out and search for that grant. I don't know if the next hire should be a grant writer slash whatever, but there's money out there, and I guarantee you, there are thousands of grant writers. It's not like there's only five in the United States. There are thousands of grant writers, experienced grant writers. We just got to get our hand on one, but guess what? We're not looking for one. We're not going to find one if we don't look for one. The grant writer is out there. Right, Ms. Davis?
Well said.
You said it. Right on point.
Anyone else from the public first?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Flora Green. I'm at 1611 North Avenue Q. I'm new to Freeport. Been here 20 years, but retired now, so I get to come to some of y'all city council meetings and to see what, how the city is run, which I've used their service. My husband had a stroke in the EMS. Mr. Motley is the one that had to lifelike him to Herman Hospital. We used him two times. Thank God he's still here, but your service here was really good, and I see you guys have the teamwork here tonight and putting things together to make this city run like a city should be running, and I'm just proud of what you guys are doing, and I'm proud to be a resident of Freeport, and I'm ready to get to work. Thank you, guys.
And we want you to come back. We're going to be here on Tuesday. Because we always hear when we're doing bad, or we made someone upset or what happened.
I think there's an opening on a board. I think there's an opening on a board.
There might even be some opening on some boards. Counsel, do you have anything you want to add real quick? Real quick, I say.
I just want to make sure that, yeah, we do get that RFQ for the Pixie House, especially since the money's there already.
I think I saw Dan write it down, so I just said it.
He'll have a whole itinerary for me to go in the morning for how my week's going to run.
Perfect. That's all. Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? Going once, twice? It is now 10:21. We're going to close this open meeting and reconvene into our regular scheduled council meeting, starting off with Agenda Item 4A, consideration and possible action on setting the city of Freeport proposed 2025 tax rate, setting the public hearing if necessary, and directing staff to publish the notice of proposed 2025 tax rate.
And staff recommends that council propose a tax rate in the amount of .514210 per $100 valuation. A vote on the proposed tax rate must be a record vote. The voter approval rate is .548749, and staff recommends adopting the lesser no new revenue rate of the .514210. On August 4th, council did make a motion to set the public hearing and adoption on September 2nd for the budget and tax rate. However, the tax rate had not yet been formally proposed, because we have to have the motion made for the tax rate and advertised adoption of the budget on the same date. A public hearing for that is only necessary if the tax rate exceeds the no new revenue rate, and we are proposing that it doesn't. Overall, the proposed budget this year was developed utilizing a projected taxable value and debt service amount, which did not increase property tax rates. Since then, city did receive the final calculations based on the 2025 total taxable value of 798 million. Of the total taxable value, 2 million, 2.8 million is from new taxable values. The calculations are performed by the tax assessor at the county and then given to the city and the required rates that have been calculated and submitted to the governing body as follows. The no new revenue tax rate, .514210, the debt rate, .062940, and then the voter approval tax rate, including unused increment rate of .548749. And then I included under the financial impact, just the overview of those rates.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to set the proposed tax rate to not exceed .514210 or the no new revenue rate.
We have a motion on the floor, gentlemen, to set the proposed tax rate not to exceed .514210 per $100 in property valuation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilman Matamortes, seconded by Councilman Davis. Is there any discussion needed on this, gentlemen?
I have a quick question here.
Yes, sir.
So, the voter approval tax rate is .548749?
Yes.
And so, explain, they've approved that higher rate, and so it would be a higher revenue for us, but we're saying we want a lower one of .514210? Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Why would we not want to go with what was approved by the voters?
They call it the voter approval rate, but it's a rate that's calculated by BCAD. They also calculate our no new revenue rate, and then it's up to the city on which rate that they want to adopt. It's a higher, a slightly higher tax rate. I don't know what the net is if you adopted that, but it would be up to council on which rate. So, it's not been passed by the voters. It's just a calculated rate that's up to council to decide.
If you exceed that rate, you have to have an election.
So, when Chris talked about earlier, Chris talked about those caps. The cap is three and a half percent right now, so the difference between those two rates is three and a half percent. Like Chris was saying, if you exceed the voter approval rate, you have to go to a vote, but council has the discretion to go up to the three and a half percent, or from any rate in between the no new revenue rate and the voter approval rate. It's up to council.
So, at this point, we're recommending not to add any additional tax revenue to the budget?
Yes.
That is correct.
Yeah, I mean, we're already dinging them with the water rates, so I don't want to ding them again, so no further questions. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of increasing taxes unless it's a necessity. All right, gentlemen, this, any other questions or comments before we call the vote? This is going to be a record vote, so I will ask individually. Councilman Pena, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. Councilman Rosso, can you speak it into the mic so we can?
Aye.
Councilman Matamortes?
Aye.
And myself, the mayor, vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. Is there another motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion to set the vote for the tax rate on September 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, 4:30 North Brazisport, Freeport, Texas.
Gentlemen, we have a motion to set the vote for the tax rate on September 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM at 4:30 North Brazisport, Freeport, Texas. That motion was made by Councilman Matamortes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Rosso. Any discussion needed on this, gentlemen?
Quick question. Is that the legislative that we are allowed to vote on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pena, how do you vote?
I'll vote aye, yes.
Can you say it in the mic, please, sir?
Aye.
Councilman Pena with a aye. Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Davis with a aye. Councilman Rosso?
Aye.
Councilman Rosso with a aye. Councilman Matamortes?
Aye.
Aye as well. Mayor votes aye, so this passes unanimously, 4-0, 5-0. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Now, we have Agenda Item 4B, consideration and possible action, approving ordinance number 2025-2745, adjusting the water and sewer rates, and approving resolution number 2025-2946, amending the master fee schedule to reflect the same. Ms. Hurst?
Yes, sir. So, earlier tonight, I showed you all four different options for potential ways to produce more revenue to cover the deficit we are looking at in the Water and Sewer Fund, so this would be the action item. If we want to make that decision tonight, all of the paperwork is ready.
Let's see if he's putting it back on screen.
Oh, Toby.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass the option, letter F, that was proposed. It provides the city with the most revenue in the water department with the least impact to the residents and the businesses.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Pena to go with option F. F is in Frank. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion for option F fails. Lack of a second. Is there another second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion for option E.
E is in Edward?
Yes.
We have a motion for option E on the floor by Councilman Matamortes. Is there a second? Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Rosso. Uh, any discussion on this, gentlemen?
That one there comes in at a one point four two, we're trying to reach the one point one six. I think you had mentioned, Mayor, that we'll probably end up having to come back to this. If it's not, uh, clearing it at a good number, then G and, E and G are the lower numbers, just don't want to bring that up.
Yes, so as, as I'm seeing it, um, option E projects a one point four two, uh, revenue increase, which will put us above the one point one six that we're expecting. But could put us at a point to where we're having this discussion again next year. However, if we get some new houses built in Freeport, that's a conversation for another day. Uh, any other questions or comments, gentlemen?
Uh, yeah, uh, like you said, that you just called out them numbers. I know G is, uh, you know, is pretty much the same thing, but, oh, we were talking about, you know, trying to help this small business restaurants and stuff out, and that's not included in that, that option. So, to me, I don't, I think we, I think we should pick one of the other two, but, two at the bottom to include this, to help out the small, small business owners.
You know, I, I kinda.
I'm done.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you.
I'm done.
No, yeah, you know, I, I'm on the fence about the, the way this was written up uh, for the small business restaurants, you know, although the restaurants do use a lot more water than, like you had mentioned earlier, a, um, department store that's gonna sell a bunch of clothes. Okay, but, um, I feel like, you know, we're picking and choosing too much on who, who is getting the, uh, the benefit. You know, so I feel like if we can't do it for one, uh, we probably shouldn't do it for, that didn't come out right, obviously. Um, but yeah, if we can't do it for all, then it's, it's hard to do it for one, in my opinion. So, any other question, any other comments, gentlemen? We have a motion and a second on the floor, uh, for approving option letter E. At this time, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second? And a second by Councilman Rosso. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
You can stick around.